Line as well.
Yes.
Cool. Lovely, lovely to see you there, Pushpa.
Nice to see you all.
Right, I can ready when you are.
We are live.
Okay, welcome everyone to the council meeting here on on these in these strange times on on Zoom. We're going to get the meeting underway with the Karakia. councillor Day, would you like to to give us the Karakia, please?
Sure. Maureen Kato, me inoitatau, wakataka te hau kitetonga, tiki te uru, wakataka te hau kitetonga, kia mā kina kina kia uta, kia mā tara tara te te ta kitai. Ehi akeana te atakura, he tiu, he huka, he hohu, te hei maori ora. Dropping over my words this morning.
Thank you councillor Day. Okay, that takes us to apologies. I've got an apology for early departure from the deputy mayor. Is there anyone else? I'm sorry, here I'm having to flick between notes and the and the screen. I see nobody else, so I'll move that seconded by councillor Day. I can see you still on the screen, so a second. Thank you.
And just to clarify, Mayor Foster, that's for attendance for the entire meeting.
Sorry?
So Deputy Mayor Frey will not be attending the entire meeting.
Can you just check is she online at the moment?
She is not.
Oh, she is?
Yeah, I thought she was going to attend the first part and then have to depart.
Yeah, yeah, I am, Andy. I can attend the first part, but I do actually have some appointments this afternoon that I need to attend in relation to my father's funeral. And I'll need to leave early morning, sort of mid morning.
I think we fully understand you have to look after those family matters, so.
Thank you, thanks.
Okay, so councillors, if you can vote, please.
I'm a yes. There we go.
Just Heidi, if you can let me know when everybody's voted.
That is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I move on to announcements by the mayor. There are none today. Then conflict of interest declarations. Are there any conflicts of interest for any of the matters on the agenda? I won't say I can't see any because I can't see you all at once, which is the joy of this system at the moment. But I don't, nobody's, nobody's saying there are, so I will take it that there are no conflicts of interest. Bear with me having to flick between screens. Confirmation of minutes, I'm going to move the minutes of the meeting of the 26th of August and the extraordinary meeting of the 8th of September. So I will move those seconded by the deputy mayor. You okay with that, Sarah?
Yes, yes.
Oh, thank you. Is there any discussion on that? I don't hear anybody wishing to do that, so if you can vote, please.
And I'm a yes.
Right, have we got everybody? Heidi?
Yes, that's everyone.
Thank you. Okay. Takes us down to items not on the agenda. There are no items not on the agenda. Public participation, we have Ellen Blake representing Living Streets Aotearoa on the paper 2.2 Waka Kapahi Revenue Update. Ellen, welcome.
Maureen Kato, Ko'era and Blakerho.
Sorry, Mayor Foster, just to interrupt, we've got the blessing from Dr. Pushpa Wood as well.
Yes, no, that's not in my meeting notes, which is why I thought when I called for Ellen, I was going, hang on a moment, where's my? This is, this is the joy of trying to do this flicking between two different things. Ellen can just hold fire for a moment and I'll go to Pushpa first. Pushpa, look, welcome.
Thank you.
Again. Can I pass over to you to give us a blessing for the meeting?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Tena koto, tena koto, tena koto, katua. Namaste and good morning. I was asked to actually give some reflections on peace at home and peace on earth. Because we've just gone through the word Peace Day, so I will share some of my reflections. Peace is not an absence of violence. It is your state of mind, your thoughts and your deeds that bring about harmony and understanding among people from all walks of life. Nelson Mandela once said, if you want to make peace with your enemy, you have to work with your enemy. Then he becomes your partner. No one is born hating another person because of the colour of his skin or his background or his religion. People must learn to hate and if they can learn to hate, they can be taught to love. For love comes more naturally to the human heart than its opposite. Some very profound words were said by Hans Klung. He passed away this year in April. He said that humanity today possesses sufficient economic, cultural and spiritual resources to introduce a better global order. There will be no peace among the civilizations without peace among the religions. There will be no peace among the religions without dialogue between the religions. There will be no new world order without a global ethic, a global ethic despite dogmatic differences. A global ethic is a minimal, basic consensus relating to binding values, revocable standards and moral attitudes which can be affirmed by all religions. Therefore, I call upon you all, let's pray for wisdom and compassion within the hearts and minds of all our world leaders and our civic leaders who have the power and the responsibility of making decisions that impact on the presence of peace. We pray for courage, dedication and integrity within the spirits of all those who work for peace around the world. Let us pray for all those who harbor thoughts and feelings of hatred, violence and greed that their hearts and their minds and their souls will be transformed into the likeness of compassion and kindness. And I'll end with some universal, some words from Sanskrit and that are regarded as universal prayer. Asato ma sadegamaya, damasoma jyotiragamaya, mrityorayamritamgamaya. Om shanti shanti shanti. Lead us from death to life. Lead us from falsehood to truth. Lead us from despair to hope, from fear to trust. Let peace fill our hearts, our world, our universe. Thank you.
Pushpa, thank you so much for those beautiful words, which hopefully will see us on a great path for the difficult discussions that we had today. Thank you very much for joining us.
Thank you.
Got it. Thank you, Ellen, for your forbearance there. Welcome.
Kia ora, Maureen Kato, Ko'era and Blakerho. Ko'era toi toi, fonganui ataraki, Living Streets Aotearoa. So we're the pedestrian advocacy group. We want to see more people walking in great spaces, particularly in Wellington. I'd just first like to say, Kia ora, Dr. Pushpa, that was lovely. It's a very centring stat. And I'd also like to say condolences to Deputy Mayor Frey. It's a sad time. So I wanted to talk about the change in funding that you're going to decide on this morning. And I just thought, just quickly outline what a, what a building a better Wellington with a focus on your priorities might, might be. We've agreed in the last 10 to 20 years of consultations that everybody in Wellington is really happy to have a compact, walkable city with great public transport connections and safe roads for everyone. So it's a little image of a well-known place in Wellington. It hopefully will change a little bit as, as things progress. If we can have the next slide, please. And I think when you were talking about the bike plan recently, there's some of the essential elements for what, what's required to get some of these changes happening, we talked about. So talking about meeting a sustainable future vision, which I think we're pretty clear what we want for Wellington. It needs to be based on evidence. We need to have a plan for things to happen. We need some funding. We need leadership and then we need to get on and do, do the work. And if we could have the next slide, please. So I've used a little three, three-leg stall as an analogy. So to, we need to support sustainable transport options to meet our better Wellington vision. And sustainable transport is about the, the sustainable transport hierarchy, which at the top is pedestrian and walking. And then there's bikes and then there's bus and train network. So to have a good, sustainable transport system, we need to, to have the legs in place for all of those three modes, I guess. And as you know, everybody walks. So the 25% of the disabled community walking and wheelchairs. They catch the buses and trains. The nearly 20% of kids will be walking. The 20% of people over 65 will be walking. We're all walking. But in Wellington, we say that we have a 19% mode share. So you'll be asking yourself, if everybody walks, why is it so low? Well, of course, the 19% only refers to the adult walking to work statistic from a census. So that means 19% of people walk the entire journey on foot from their home to their work. And that's the highest in New Zealand. But of course, because everybody walks, the public transport networks always include some walking component as well. So there's another 21% of people in Wellington who will walk as part of their journey. And of course, car drivers have to do some walking as well. They can't just leap straight from their car into their office desk or their other work environments. So while we say 19% of people, the mode share is in Wellington, it's actually much higher than that. So to, to get our sustainable transport options and system in place, we need all of these factors in place. But what we've got at the moment is, next slide, please. This is what we've got currently. So we've got, and we need to be thinking about building on this foundation and getting a stall that we can, is actually functional. So we've got some great vision for all, all three modes. We've got evidence of varying degrees for all three modes. We clearly know from international research that building more walkable cities is just a fundamental part of building a better city for everybody, and that's for everybody. We've got a plan in place for the bike network. We've got a plan for the bus priority. We do not have a plan for walking or the pedestrian environment. And obviously, we've got funding for the bike network. We're missing the funding and the bus and train network. And there, there isn't any particular funding for walking improvements, which I see as one of the things that's been proposed as being cut back. So this is what we've got currently. We're talking about cutting some more of the legs off of this little stall. So it will be, it become even less functional. So I would just like to ask you to be, consider clearly what you're doing when you are cutting more funding for walking improvements. I see that the option too, which you're being asked to consider and approve says that for town centre upgrades, which will be Kauri, I imagine, which is a much pared back vision and was originally intended. But also to only partially fund things like the Build Back Better initiative, which it means that when you do some work, you build it back better. You don't just replace what was there. There's something called walking improvements, which I'm not too sure what that means. And the Safe Routes to School Programme, I think it's a, it's a, the Safe Routes to School work is always very minimal and it really shouldn't be cut back at all. In fact, it should be boosted. And then the LED, more energy efficient lighting project is being deferred, which I would have thought was part of Peneke promise. And the laneways projects are being deferred as well, which as far as I know, there's only one even proposed, which was on Swan Lane. So I don't know if that's the one that's being deferred, which would be a real shame. So what I'm saying is I don't think there's enough information here for us, for us public anyway, to understand what's being cut or proposed to be cut. And I would strongly suggest that the low cost, low risk projects should be referred to as low cost, high value. You're not having to pay very much money. You get a really big benefit from them. So please don't cut the walking budget. We need to see more of that leg if we're going to be able to sit on a stall. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. How much time have we got left, Heidi? Please?
Two minutes fifty.
Right, I can see a question then from councillor Penner. And councillor Rush at this time.
Kia ora, Ellen, thank you so much for your wonderful submission. I'm just wondering if you've had any interactions with NZTA, who are after the ones who have reduced their funding? And what you think about their priorities around walking, driving and public transport? Thank you.
Well, I think the, the cutting and funding both from the NZTA and what's proposed shows what people's priorities are. And it's not, it is not the sustainable transport hierarchy. It's a, it's a wonky stall that won't, is not functional.
Thank you, councillor Rush.
Hi, Ellen, thanks so much. You made some really, really good points. You always do, of course. I'm just wondering, this has come at, at least maybe very quickly and maybe you've been a bit closer to this. So, I mean, is there any harm in us taking a little bit more time and having a good think about some of the things that you have raised? But also to, to reconfigure it with our capital programme and maybe come up with a, a better sort of response that might address some of the concerns that you have raised?
It's a bit beyond my, what I understand how you, the process works, Shaun, but I guess that it sounds like a sensible way forward, but I'm not sure how quickly some of these decisions need to be made.
Can we get officer advice on timetable? If we can, your worship at some point?
I think that's a question you might want to ask when we come to that paper. Yeah, I know where you're going, but I know that she's been raised with me. Yeah, yeah. Okay. Thank you, Ellen. Very much appreciated.
Thanks.
Cool. Okay, councillors, that takes us to item one on the agenda, which is the Three Waters paper. Mike, is there anything you wanted to say, given that you, you know, we had a fairly fulsome session yesterday? And lots of questions were asked as well. So I'm not expecting that we would have a lot of time spent on the Q and A part. We'll get straight into the debate. It's Mike on.
Thanks, your worship. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, just a couple of quick points, just to reinforce that we aren't asking for a decision today. Report does build significantly on the Mural Task Force and largely aligns with the Mural Task Force. But when we did the task force, it was actually blind to the magnitude of the government and the extent of the government reforms. So the reforms do extend beyond the Mural Task Force with respect to the design of the water service entities and also with respect to the analysis that has been done to underpin the government decision making. We hadn't done any of that analysis. Nor do we anticipate the detailed Olympics on our balance sheet, which we are now looking at much more closely in balance sheet separation. So I just wanted to remake the point that the Mural Task Force didn't really look in great detail about some of the issues that we're going to debate today. But otherwise, I think we've reversed most of the issues quite deeply. Your worship.
Thank you. Is there anything that people desperately want to raise that they feel they actually don't understand? I'm here, I'm not getting to any political points that people want to try and make through questions, but is there anything that people want to, to raise that they genuinely do not understand at this stage? I'm not seeing anybody. Oh, yeah, now I am. Councillor Rush and Young, I'm going to try and make this relatively short, this bit, please.
Yeah, so, so Mike, just one point that came up in respect to an amendment, I believe councillor Conde is going to, to bring around the, the optimal size of connections. And my read of the papers suggested that the optimal size is six to 800,000. And entity C is 955,000. In fact, only one entity is below 800,000. Is, is that the sort of, that's, that's the information that I see in the package. Have I misunderstood or? Is there other information?
That's not quite right, councillor. So what that advice is, is the minimum size of the water service entity is between 600 and 800, just to verify what we're discussing this morning. So that's the floor. That's not the, that's not the actual range. That is the minimum to get the efficiencies.
Gotcha. Thank you. Helpful.
Mayor, can I?
Oh, sorry.
Mayor, I'm just going to say, can I also clarify if there are amendments that are being put forward that you need advice on? Do you want to do that as part of this Q and A or at the time they're put?
I think we'll do it at the time they're put.
Thank you.
And, and I would just counsel you, if you can make sure that the answers you give are purely around the factual matters rather than anything that is dangerously veering into the political.
We always understand that, Mayor.
Councillor Young and councillor Calvert. And then I'm going to, then I'm going to close the questions off.
So I'm still bewildered by the fact that all around the country, people are, you know, voting one way or the other on the Three Waters and we're still just being asked to note because I think I'm concerned that we look like a bunch of wusses. And I'm just wondering why that is? Why are we just being asked to note?
Councillor, the government's been really clear that they are not requiring us to make a decision yet. In fact, we cannot make a decision yet because we do not have all the information that we need to, to make any such decision. The government will be coming out with guidance in October about the next step. And that will include what the next steps are with respect to decision making and how we engage with our communities.
Can I also add councillor that the vast majority of councils are not making decisions at this stage? The councils that are making firm decisions one way or the other are in the minority at present.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Calvert.
Thank you. Actually, this is a question more for you, Mayor. I think this.
You're going to ask me to end the debate?
Oh, no, no, it's before we get to debate and this is just how this is going to run because I think there's quite a few amendments and, and some just being finalised now, maybe even substantive. And I just want to make sure that we've all got time to look at them properly. So you, whether you need to take it as a smaller German, so just, just, I just, I just want to be clear that we're all comfortable about what we've got in front of us. That's all.
Yeah, look, I, I think that's, that's probably a wise thing to do. And it's probably sensible to do that in advance of actually me starting the debate and then us stopping. Councillors, those, can I just check how many amendments we got? So I, I will be moving an amended substantive, which I believe that councillor Rush has circulated to everybody. He was, he drafted it, so yeah, he's nodding, so that's been circulated. Okay, so at least you got that one. I understand this one from councillor Conde. Councillor Day, is that another one? Right, okay. Councillor Fitzsimons, you've got your hand up as well. Is that another one?
Can I just say that my ones are, a couple of the ones that councillor Conde had put forward, so.
Okay, so they're already mixed. Okay, cool. So I'm just trying to get a handle on how many actual different sets of words that are going to be, whether it's substantive or amendments. At the moment, that sounds like only two.
And that's, and there's mine because I don't believe mine have been incorporated properly. Yeah.
Okay. Right, so what, have, have they all been circulated to everybody? And then I'll take councillor Fitzsimons.
Yeah, sorry.
No, sorry, no, sorry, go, go, councillor Calvert was still just finishing off.
Oh, no, I just think, I, I know councillor Rush has sent, but I thought that you were making some fine, minor tweaks to it. So I just really want to make sure I've got the most current version of sure councillor Rush's ones or your ones. I just want to make sure I've got that.
Okay, well, I think the, the only thing I'd added to councillor Rush's was just the thing about whether you want me to or not to sign up to the entity C letter that's going to the minister with alongside or most of the other councils in the entity area. So it was the only, that was the only change.
Okay, so we can see the final list.
We'll make sure you've got that. Okay, councillor Fitzsimons, we're just dealing with the process here at the moment.
Yeah, this is on the process too. I just want to, I raised it in an email last night. I just want to be really clear that all councillors are getting the same officer advice. So when officers are giving advice about particular amendments, that we're all getting it because that was part of the window review, that some people are getting some information, others aren't. And I'm just wondering with this, where we have amendments from, it sounds like four or five councillors, there might need to be some flexibility around seeking officer advice on this, just because there's also a paper from them. Now we're getting an amended substantive. Personally, I would quite like to hear from our officers who I know have been engaged with DIA a lot around this. I just, I'm asking for a little bit of flexibility in how that process works.
Happy with that. So what we'll do is make sure, and I suspect that probably means that everybody's going to have to go and take a couple of moments to go and print everything off that they've got. Because it's just unfortunate in this environment, it is not possible to keep on flicking between, being able to see each other and have different bits of paper and you'll inevitably end up losing things and getting confused. So, so we will take about a, maybe a 10 minute pause just to allow us to make sure we've got them all, to print them all and to digest them. And then, then I'll go to, if there are any substantive questions of officers on them, I think we'll deal with that first.
And can we have all the officer advice circulated in time for that too?
Well, I think they might have to deal with that in orally rather than in, in writing. So I don't have time to write it.
Oh, no, I mean if there has been already.
I, I'm not aware of any, so, and, and that's not aware of any written other than what you've already seen.
That, that is correct, Mayor.
Yep, cool. Councillor Young, again on process.
Yes, on process. There have been so many emails flying through with amendments and changes and things. I'm, when you say councillor Rush's amendments, for example, could we actually distill which ones we're looking at?
And also buried somewhere in the emails is the letter you're talking about on behalf of the mayors.
Could we also have that drawn to our attention so we know what to print, so we know what we're voting on? Because at the moment, it is just a bit overwhelming.
I, I can, I can fully appreciate that. And this is the cha, this is the challenge again in this particular environment. A lot of emails and sometimes you might not see the crucial one. That can happen. Okay, so councillors, what we'll do is we'll take a break. Heidi, can we come back? Maybe, shall we say 10 past, 10 past 10? Now, the first, so the first thing we need to do is make sure, I will synthesise or myself or councillor Rush will synthesise what I intend to move. Councillor Conde will make sure that we've got your words, councillor Calvert likewise. And we'll make sure also we've got the, the letter again. Maybe that will get resent to you. That's the one that's been circulated through the entity C mayors. Okay? So we'll be, we'll be back at 10 past, okay? Do you want quarter past? Let's give us this quarter past. Let's give us this. Yeah, okay, quarter past. Cool. See you then.
So Andy, do you visit some sort of role for me in this?
Yeah, so just sure. Heidi, you, you there on there?
I am, and the audio is live.
The audio is live?
Yep. I'll stop sharing my screen. Yeah.
Okay, right. Now, do we have everybody back? Let's see. Okay, is everybody, Heidi, have you got everybody there?
Everyone is here, just both have their cameras off. People are coming back slowly now.
Cool. We'll wait, wait just a moment then.
Kia ora, Mayor, I'm, I'm just saying that because we're seeing a lot of work all at once here, we, we just, as officers need another five minutes to make sure we're ready to answer questions. Thank you.
Do you want to hold fire then, Heidi, for another five, please, before going live?
Mayor, I just wonder whether we need even a bit longer because we've just got the letter from the entity C and, and I need to look at that. I don't know about anybody else, but I haven't seen this before. So I think.
It was, it was sent to you, it was sent to you a little bit earlier, but that's okay. I'm happy to give a little bit longer. But not too much. Otherwise, I think we're going to get to morning tea unless people want to take morning tea now.
I, I think we should take morning tea now and, and make it, you know, a good quarter of an hour. That means that we can then look at the stuff that we've got. I don't know how everybody else feels about it, but I think. That means that we can then look at the stuff that we've got. If I don't know how everybody else feels about it, but I think that would be.
Councillors, unless anybody violently objects, I'm happy to do that.
I would just be sensitive to Counselor or Deputy Mayor Free's timetable.
Sarah, is that a problem for you? We were going to have to break from morning tea soon anyway, so. I'm not hearing any response. I can't see whoever. I've got to get my screen sorted out so I can see everybody. Okay, right.
Can you just give us a time though, Andy, just so we can.
Okay, look, are you so you're just generally happy with that approach? Okay, that gives us, what are we now? We must be 10:15. So we are.
So the 10:35.
10:30, 10:35.
10:35.
Okay, 10:35. Hayley, can you put up on the screen that we're resuming at 10:35 and and note that that will be after morning tea? Okay, cool. We'll be back then. Hayley, are you on? Cool. I see my council's fair back. Nice to see Malcolm.
Yes, we are live. I'll just stop sharing my screen at 10:35.
Cool, okay. Are we good to go, Hayley?
We are live.
Okay, cool. Right. Well, welcome back, everyone, and apologies for anybody who's been been watching. We've had to take a little bit of time to digest the various bits of material from different councillors and also for officers to be able to give some consideration to that. We thought we'd incorporate morning tea at the same time so as we can have a free run over the next period through into lunchtime. So I guess what I'm going to do is ask if people have any questions of of any of the amendments to offices and then it gives us a clear shot at then having a debate. So is there anybody who has any questions of officers? If you don't have any, that's absolutely fine.
Mayor, we certainly have some advice to give the council as we've gone through each of these amendments line by line when you're ready.
Well, let's let's do that then because that might deal with some of the questions before we start. Right. So where do you want to start then? Barbara?
We'll start with the amended substantive from yourself and Counselor Rush.
So perhaps I can begin your worship. Just straight to paragraph four.
Yes.
Bullet point one.
Yes.
Just to be clear, that the actual wording in the Mural Task Force, the task force envisages the entity being governed and operated in accordance with a statement of intent from shareholding councils.
I'm very happy to take that on board because that was the intent of that. Counselor Rush is nodding. He was the drafter draftsman for that. So we do be happy with that, officers, if that was amended accordingly because that reflects exactly what would then reflect exactly what was in Recommendation 30 of Mural Task Force.
Would you please repeat that, Mike?
Could you please repeat that? And then we'll and Hayley, if you can pop that into the into the motion as it will be moved.
So reading directly from the advice of the Mural Task Force, that actual recommendation said commits to the concept of an independent, publicly owned, not-for-profit water management and asset owning entity that is governed and operates in accordance with a statement of intent from shareholding councils.
Cool. Okay, thank you. What's your next one there, officers?
Second bullet point, just to point out that see that this wasn't actually a a recommendation. That's a reference to a part of a narrative on page 29. But just wanted to advise that that statement in the Mural Task Force was a general statement about more economies of scale. It wasn't actually a recommendation and it wasn't supported by any detailed analysis. It was a very vague statement about economies of scale. And just didn't want to give the impression that somehow it was given more detail and more rigor than it actually was intended on page 29 of the Mural Task Force.
Yeah, I I think the I think the intent with that, Mike, was clearly that the Mural Task Force was looking at saying amalgamating things in some way or other gave scale. It's just a matter of how much you amalgamate, how big a scale. So are you are you okay with that as it's written or you want it to be changed?
I think it needs to be changed, Mayor, on the basis that it is inferring that it was a recommendation from the Mural Task Force. Mike, do you have a suggestion?
Yes, just take it out. Yeah, if you have me to say that, I'm not sure.
Okay, if we're happy to strike it out, that's fine. No, no problem with that. Okay, next one.
So the next one will now be the third bullet point. Just want to advise that in our view, this is the guts of what this, we think this is the guts of what this paragraph is trying to achieve. It's all about local voice and influence. And the recommendations that are referenced in this in this bullet point really are the detail. Things like, you know, zero bay pilots in a sludge that sit behind the intent of what we're trying to achieve here. So I I wonder if it's really necessary and if we could actually incorporate it into the narrative around number four. But I my advice is that some of that stuff is redundant because what it is doing is talking about the detail of what you're trying to achieve here and there is community voice and influence.
Yeah, I think that that's obviously a decision councillors can make or not make, to what they think it's worth reflecting on that or not. Okay, any others? No, okay, cool.
We're passing on to Sarah. We do have other comments to make, but Sarah, Sarah Haywell.
Okay, Sarah.
Yes, just catching up. No, it's actually.
Oh, six.
Sorry, Barbara, could you scroll up to the?
So we're now on item six, are we?
Yes.
Okay, yep.
Okay, look, all I'll say about that is, of course, the council's decision. The reason we drafted the recommendation in the way we did is that as Chief Executive Officer, my job is to implement the decisions of the council as a whole. And so we were trying to convey that as a neutral officer's job to undertake the work at the instruction of the council. But that ultimately what you do with item six is for the council to decide.
Okay, that's fine. I'll deal with that in 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 opening.
So my advice relates to six A, if you scroll down. On the alternative being proposed. I just have to express some strong concerns regarding the proposed structure. We need to understand whether that structure would achieve an off balance sheet outcome. And there's a few lenses that we need to consider. One is around control. The other is around which entity would have to manage any downstream risks. And the third is around consolidation accounting. And so whether this enables either the entity or individual councils to gear up and borrow the amount required to deliver the infrastructure deficit. On on the surface, I'm not convinced that the structure would do that, so it would need more work.
So I think in effect, our advice about six A is that it would be best not to interleave an alternative proposal into the council's decision today because it hasn't been properly reviewed and we should be giving advice within the body of the report on any alternative proposal and we haven't.
So we would we would support an intent statement. So if the intent is to provide, you know, find a pathway to greater influence, as Mike mentioned earlier, but the the actual structure, we haven't had time to review.
Yeah, but I think that's entirely understandable. I think at the moment it just says no. I think it was trying to be helpful to government, say, hey, maybe you want to think about a sub a sub Entity C sort of a proposition. It's I don't think there's any suggestion that that's a worked up proposition at this stage. Okay, is there anything else on that lot that you want to go through?
No, it would just be the six.
Anything else with any of the other, so the other amendments?
Yes, do you want us to move to the.
Yes, please. Yep, if you can. Yes, yep. So that that way we deal with all the your comments and then hopefully that obviates as many questions as possible.
Sure. So if you move to number 12. So I'm happy with eight, nine, 10, 11. Number 12, we would just clarify that that's based on the analysis by DIA as opposed to the assumptions in the Mural Task Force. So that's fine. Number 13.
Would it so just on that, would it be better if it actually said that that is DIA's assessment?
We're agnostic. It's just so councillors understand that that's that's analysis that has been formed by the ground. 13. Yeah, just to be clear, that local control effectively means that the entities borrowing would impact on the ability of council to borrow and for the other priorities and vice versa. So just be clear around that recommendation. Happy with 14 through to the third bullet point. So I'll hand over to Mike, are you okay on the third?
Yeah, it's just what the third and fourth bullet point need to be read together. Yeah, that's that's the only advice you wanted to say. Perhaps it could be tweaked, but just making sure that you're aware of it.
So are you talking about number 14?
Number 14, bullets three and bullets four need to be read in conjunction.
But noting that the actual recommendation is just requesting DIA to explore these options. We're comfortable with that. And number 16, if it's still there, was a duplication of number 10. No, it's gone. Okay.
Right, okay.
Sorry. Yeah, so so number 16, the amendment nearby, Dan Paul, is exactly the same as in Counselor Conde's recommendation. I mean, number 10. So however you want to deal with that.
We'll we'll take the first one, whichever one gets moved first and the other one can drop off.
So I have removed the duplication from Counselor Conde's amendment, so it should stand as 16 from Counselor Day.
Cool, okay, thank you.
And the last one was on 17 and the councillors, Calvert and Pennett. We just want to be really clear that we don't want to duplicate. If the government does look to make a change in what the process will be. So I think if you had some thoughts on this, you can provide some advice, please.
Kia ora, councillors. Yeah, our advice would be that we make a clear commitment to consultation irrespective of what the government reform may be. If that is your wish, but be clear that we won't be doing a two layer. So if if government reform on consultation says we must do it a certain way, then we'll do it that way. But if and if there is no reform, then we will, of course, be consulting in accordance with our significance and engagement policy, which requires an LTP amendment, I think significant consultation anyway.
I'll probably ask Councillors Calvert and Pennett whether they're. Yeah, Councillors Calvert and Pennett, I understood that the intention was to make sure that there was consultation of some some form regardless of who does it.
Yeah, I I personally, I don't know, I haven't talked to Counselor Pennett, but I I acknowledge officers' advice, but this is a clear signal that we will be going out to consult with our community. They made it clear that's what they want and this, anything less than that is watering it down. So but subject to Counselor Pennett, that's my initial view.
Well, I'm happy to. I'll propose some wording, which shall I send through to you, Counselor Calvert, and make sure you're happy with it?
Yeah, you can send it to me and Counselor Pennett.
And I'll talk I'll talk to Counselor Calvert.
Thank you. Thank you. That's cool. Okay, right. So that that goes through all of those. Hopefully, it means most of the questions gone, but I do see Counselor Matthews, you've got a question.
Yeah, my question is, as a relatively new councillor, this is the most heavily amended substantive proposal I've ever seen. And I guess I just, it does seem unusual the extent to which the recommendations are now written by councillors. And I guess I just want some advice from officers about whether they feel it sort of substantively changes the paper that they put up. Because I have sort of concern that it that it might. So, yeah, that's my question.
Counselor Matthews, from an officer perspective, we we do see the council being very active with amendments to many of the reports we put forward. And the council is empowered to do that, but but certainly we should, if we feel that changes are being made to the point that it changes the whole point of our advice. We absolutely, it is. It's our absolute responsibility to tell you that. And I hope we've done that today. So I think there are I see a number of additional points being made through these amendments that I I might think are unnecessary to state, but that's not my prerogative. That's for the council to determine. But if there is, if there is an item in any amendment that that is actually, you know, the opposite of of the intent or we think is incorrect or unhelpful, or we would like to advise against it, we definitely need to do that. And I hope that we have done that today.
Thank you. Got quite a few other questions. See if we can wrap these reasonably quickly. So Councillors Fitzsimons, O'Neill and Day.
Yeah, I just want to say that it might well be that we can't wrap these up pretty quickly. And part of the concern I want to raise is that some councillors have had direct access to officers to discuss, and it's sort of following on from Counselor Matthews' point, to discuss their amendments. And the way that I approached this was to go through the agreed Q and A process and send my questions in and wait for the response and attend the workshop. And I didn't realise there was a whole nother stream of conversation going on. And I guess I really just want a commitment from officers that that when that's happening, we all get to know about it. Because otherwise, we sort of have the situation where in the lead up to the meeting and even at the meeting, councillors can say, well, I've got I've spoken to officers and blah, blah, blah. And you're in the debate, you can't correct whether that's right or not. So we're sort of left in this position where some people have had a lot of discussions and some people haven't. And I just think it's it's potentially quite problematic. So can we just have a practice that when that's happening, it gets summarized and sent to all councillors and that the sort of obligation is on the officers to do that. And it's it is a lot easier when it's email. But also that when it is an email, and I'm I'm advised that it that it hasn't happened in this instance, although that's a bit that's a bit confusing because there's other people have said that they've been emailing, that we that we just CC and everyone. So Beth, if you've got, for example, a suggested amendment for Councillors Calvert and Pennett, you know, I think it's it's absolutely appropriate that they get it, but we should also see it because that's the officer advice.
I don't think in this case, Counselor Fitzsimons, there's been a lot of to-ing and fro-ing with officers at all. I don't think from anybody. I don't know. I certainly haven't. So, you know, we've had the discussions that we had yesterday. But, yeah. So I don't I don't know if that's the case or not.
So so Mayor, you're correct. Look, if a elected member contacts me or or one of my team to ask a question, we we will, of course, be responsive. But there hasn't been a lot of dialogue. And in fact, in the situations I know about, it's been more about just reinforcing what we've already said in our report. And of course, individual elected members will either choose to agree or disagree.
But. So is it is it the practice that when you give written advice, it's it's CC to all councillors?
Should be, yes. Absolutely, Counselor Fitzsimons, we we are committed to the process that has been agreed. So if we vary from it, I'm very happy.
I mean, I know it may happen, you know, I'm. I mean, I know it may happen, you know, I'm but I've got other questions.
Oh, okay. Well, let's, let's, let's go for those, please.
Can you, can you just bring up the six As and the six letter amendments? Thanks, Heidi. Oh, yeah, cool. And I'm sorry, I just, I didn't grasp them and I couldn't see them easily on my computer. Thank you. Oh, sorry. Sorry, can you go back to them? I do have a question just arising out of them. And just the, the joint letter, has, has that been tabled?
That's the one that, when we had the break, that's the one that I sent to you or I sent it a couple of days ago.
Yeah, no, I know that. I've seen it. But has it been tabled formally in the meeting? And can we get it just, can we get it tabled?
Oh, we can, we, we can table that. Yeah, we can attach that to the minutes appropriate, as appropriate. Yeah.
Yeah, great.
Yeah. And I'm simply with, with that one, if I could just say, I'm simply saying to you, do you want me to sign her or not?
I know, I know.
There are some councillors that are going no, some are going yes.
Yeah, the public are watching or this becomes a record. I just want people to know what, what you are signing or not signing. And just if you could go up to the officer advice on the substantive six. Stop there. I, sorry, go up. And carry on. Yeah, on four and three, can I just, can you just outline again what the officer advice is around? What aspects of it that you, what you had thought was not necessary or is otherwise repetitive?
Councillor, they've, they've already given us that just a few minutes ago. I don't want to do it, do it again.
There were just three points. I didn't get one of them and I just couldn't understand, quite understand why they were objecting to it. I think it was a number
We took out the second one about transfer of assets and scale.
Right.
That was the one that they said, no.
Oh, and that's not there anymore. I can't see it.
Because it wasn't, it wasn't actually a recommendation of the task force. It was something which was noted in the, in the body of page 29 of the task force. That's why, that's
So my question, my question just to officers is, is there anything more that you hadn't said to us or you could expand on just in order to help our understanding?
So councillor Fitzsimons, do you mean the entire substantive or, or in particular under point four?
Yeah, four and six.
Four and six. Okay. Let's just look at four again.
I think you said in three councillor Fitzsimons, because there's quite a lot of extra stuff added to three.
What, what we were checking through you, Mia, was that if we were going to start bringing in points made by the Mural Task Force into this, that we needed to make sure that they were an accurate reflection of the report of the Mural Task Force. And so we went through the points where we believed that correction was necessary. And I, yeah.
And number three is just a restatement of what was resolved at a previous committee.
So I can understand this is confusing for councillors because you're hearing this for the first time and you're
It's just also not helped, to be honest, by doing it on Zoom without two screens.
Yeah, that's what, that's what
And I did try and read it at the break, but I spent most of the time trying to get my printed work, to be honest.
Ah, yeah, that's a technological problem.
If, if it's helpful through you, Mia, we, we can simply just quickly repeat. Where changes haven't already been made, where we think. Is there anything left there? In other words, Mike, that needs to be addressed or that the council needs to understand before this is taken to the vote?
Not in my view, councillor. Three really is just a repeat of what you've already resolved. So that's just reinforcing what you already know. And given that four really is around community voice and community influence, it's largely aligned with, with the advice that you had before you anyway.
Okay, look, I'm going to take the three other questions that are, are up there and then I think we'll move to actually getting on with the discussion because we've got a lot to get through today. This is not the only, only issue. Councillor O'Neill, just quickly, and then Day and then Conde.
Um, thank you. My question was around if we are able to table the memo that Liz Kelly sent around yesterday or if I just think in particular for councillor Day and Paul's amendments, if we are able to add anything to the letter that we would be signing up to, or if we cannot make any amendments to that, or if there's a way that we can sort of continue.
Can I just speak to that? Because that was sent to councillors' notes, not really as a statement to be, I mean, Liz can speak to it if she wants, but I don't think that was
No, no, not at the moment. Yeah.
Yeah, fair enough. I see Liz. And then, sorry, my, my other part I was how many of these can maybe just be added to the substantive? Or if councillors wanted to debate each of the amendments?
Ah, look, that's in your hands. You get three minutes. So, you know, ideally, ideally, the minimum, the, the less we have to speak, the better it is. Councillor Day.
My question is not really a question, it's just pointing out there's an era, a grammatical error. Councillor Yang, if you picked it up.
Oh, goodness me.
Number five, it says we're practical. I think it should say we're.
Excellent. Good. I think we can cope with that one.
I think it's just a typo.
Cool. Right. Councillor Conde.
Kiora. I guess I would just like to get some officer advice on the, whether you think that the letter from entity C, so one of the things, the amendments, and the mayor wants to know whether we should sign the letter written by entity C. And my question is, how consistent do you see that letter is with the advice that you've provided in this paper? Is it pretty much the same? Does the letter go further or, or, you know, does it disagree with your advice? I, I would be keen to hear officer views on that.
Generally speaking, in fact, the lesson is aligned with the advice we have given you. If anything, it's a little bit conservative, maybe the advice that was given you. But I don't see any areas where it is in conflict, councillor.
Cool. Okay. Thank you.
Hold on, I've got another question. I just had a question about one of the bullet points in number four, there's a bullet point that says several areas are bespoke to
Pop that up, please, Heidi.
City context. So, yeah, just at the bottom of that page, there's several areas are bespoke to Wellington City context and dependent on strong local voice. But one of the ones there is, was wastewater. And when I was reading those recommendations, I actually didn't see anything in those that seemed like they were particularly Wellington specific, like they were mostly just about complying with the MPS freshwater management, which everybody across the country is going to have to be. And I felt possibly that might extend to some of the others. I was just wondering if officers had a view about whether those recommendations as identified actually are bespoke to Wellington or whether they're more shared issues across the country.
Certainly they are. They are Wellington issues, but they are actually can give it to the country. So I'm just looking at the recommendations now from the Mural Task Force. So it's a roadmap to comply with the NPS stream fitting consents and codes of compliance and regulatory and policy measures to ensure that council and requires the end owners to fix their, their broken pipes. So, so those are issues that we have that are live and well-known in Ophirua Bay in particular, but they're not specific to us. They actually occur across the country at the moment, councillor.
The advice was that bullet point four is, is detail that supports bullet point three above it. So whether you need that level of detail or not, we would
Yeah, it's a good question. Yes. Now, bullet point.
I, I think councillors, the issue is where you're going to say that's a really big issue one way or another, probably the, the local bit there, that will be the, the Ophirua Bay comment, which is I think 20 in the task force recommendations. That, that would be the only one I would have thought. Councillor Rush, I did say that we were done with questions. Is it desperate?
I was just going to explain what, what I was thinking. It was really about my point treatment plant and, you know, that might be covered by low carbon, but that, that was all.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Right. Okay. We're in a position where we can now move the papers and then we can get into the discussion and we'll try and keep, I will, if we get three in favour, three, I'll ask for against or vice versa. So we'll try and truncate it, but I'm not sure whether that will achieve that. Absolutely. Just to start off with, can I just say, I'm going to start off just by acknowledging councillor Matthews' comments. And I think I saw the, the smile there when officers said, you know, this council is in the habit of amending lots of things. So that is true, we are. This probably is, if I've seen any area of anything that I've seen from local governments, an area which governors have taken the lead in, in the recommendations which have been passed. And, but that, that is just what it is. I think that's the intensity of interest in this thing. Just to let you know, I went to a breakfast presentation with the minister this morning. It was mostly about foreign affairs, but the three waters absolutely came up in several questions. And I also took the chance for a brief chat at the end of that. And the key message that I got from that, and I think we all got from that, because that was actually the way it was summed up by Colin Keating, who was doing the, the Q and A with the minister, was that the key to all of these relationships issue is to talk, have dialogue and have give and take. And there's a, a very nice, a very beautiful fakatoki which was, was presented there. Konakai and arangatira hekurokoro, the food of chiefs is dialogue. And I think the, our resolutions and the way we go forward has, has to, to reflect that. I think we need to recognise that there is a need for change and I think we do. We've said that, the Mural Task Force said exactly that. But the, but the model, I think most people probably say needs some considerable work. Around the country, you can clearly see that a lot of people are saying it really needs work. And I think it does need some work and that means ongoing dialogue. And the impression I got from the minister is she is very much up for that. And we do a lot of work now in the co-design space and that's something which, you know, just when we did Ahatini recently, that really went down very, very well. It's the kind of thing which we're starting doing now with the economic strategy. It's the kind of thing we should do more of. And I think co-design, sometimes we're the subservient party, if you like, or the, the one who's lower down the tree. And, you know, co-design for us in this space, I think will be really, really good. For me, if the government were to legislate, that would not be co-designed, that would not be working together. If we were to withdraw, that would also be not working together. And at the moment, of course, we are not being asked, even though some councils have done that, we're not being asked to opt in or to opt out. All we're being asked to do is to say, hey, these are things which we have got concerns about. These are the things which we think you need to have, pay further attention to. And potentially these are some suggestions we, that we might make in a constructive fashion. And to me, our basis should be the, the Mural Task Force and Three Waters. Because we, we, we receive that unanimously. The ongoing discussion that we've had as a council was essentially around water meter rather than anything else within the Mural Task Force report. At the time when we did the Mural Task Force, obviously the reform process was underway. It was gaining visibility. We certainly didn't know what the shape of it was going to be. And we did, we didn't see the actual proposals until May of this year, which was of course six months after I not only completed the Mural Task Force report, but received it. So the task force, I think quite reasonably hedged on the reforms because we didn't know what that actually looked like. What we said in many, many places in the task forces, we thought asset divestment to W W L or to a new water services entity was appropriate. It was an or, so we could make, make a call around that kind of thing. Some of the aspects of the reform as proposed are, I think, consistent with the Mural Task Force. Whether they advance it more than a W W L plus model or some other model or not, that's a decision that you can make. Others are, I think, not so consistent or would be unquestionably, certainly in my view, more difficult. Especially those ones which are around local issues, for example, the kind of things which are highlighted in the resolution in front of you. Delivery sledge, sledge treatment, for example, that I can't see, if we haven't locked and loaded that, if a water entity is there which is operated from Gisborne to Tasman, where is that going to fit in the, in the priorities of an entity which is statutorily required to deal with things like making sure fresh drinking water or high quality drinking water is there for every rural area, that is going to be ahead of things like sledge treatment. It is going to be ahead of things like seismic resilience for Wellington City. So those are the kind of things we need to make sure are protected, not just for the first three years, but, you know, for the next 10, 20, 30, 40, 50 years. Because those needs are not going to go away for our city, particularly the seismic resilient one, even if we dealt with the sledge treatment issue. There are other issues which have been raised already in questions around local issues around, you know, local catchments and things of that nature, working with communities. Community involvement in, for example, in catchments, and that is different to customer involvement. You can have customer feedback, but community is a different thing than a customer. So communities are going to be interested in what is the state of a Fera stream? What is the state of Kaifaro Forest Stream? What is the state of the Hut River? What is the state of the Mano O Two River and so on? So those things, communities are going to want to be able to be involved in that. We, of course, allow and facilitate that and encourage that. Will a water entity do that as well? And that's one of the questions which I think legitimately we need to, to raise. It's clear there are going to be questions which we should raise around integration of stormwater with things like roads, because the roads are a part of the stormwater network. Water sensitive urban design, I know it's a passion particularly for councillor Pennett. How interfaces things like parks, streams, passive stormwater management. And it's quite clear in the the government's cabinet paper of June, that they see there are some technical and legal complexities around untangling those things and effectively giving a water service entity powers which currently exist with councils for things like land management, etc. So there's, there's work to be, work done there. And then, of course, there's the ongoing issue of communities and their councils being able to influence what happens over time. That's probably at the heart of, the heart of the matter for many communities. What's very clear is there is strong community opposition over the country as a whole. Despite what is really felt to a degree like an extended sales pitch from the government or at least its officials for some months, trying to persuade us that this is a great idea. It's been interesting seeing some of the feedback from some of the councils around the country expressed by mayors and councils, but also by some of the communities, like for example, Wanamariri, where they got three and 3,000 something or other submissions, the most they'd had by country mile on anything. And 95% of them said don't like it. And that's, that's also reflected in other communities. Now, why they don't like it, I don't know. But there's clearly some, definitely a lot more conversation that needs to be had to persuade communities, let alone councils, to come across the line. So it's us being involved in that conversation. The other thing I wanted to say is what really concerns me is this is dividing the local government fairly. And you've already seen for the first time, I think ever, a council going, we're out of local government in New Zealand and others might be too. That really concerns me and that's something which I think we need to try and try however we can to try and bring, bring people back together again to this, because I think that would be very bad for local government going forward. There is an element of centralisation versus localism in this. We're already a very centralised country in, in terms of the OECD. Whether that's helping us or hindering us, I guess, is with further discussion. And it is a discussion which we need to have as part of the future of local government. And I don't think that should just be the future of local government. In fact, it's an issue which I have raised. And I think, I think it's got some currency that it should be about the future of what in gov, in the whole government sector should be localised and what should be centralised. Because some, there are some things which government currently does which possibly should be localised. There are some things which local government does, I'd give building and sense away in a jiffy, which maybe should be centralised. Just to finish off with, the genesis of this reform keeps being talked about, I've heard time and time again, Havlock. We don't have the Havlock issue. We have had, I think, A-grade quality water probably for all of our lifetimes. So that is not an issue. In fact, I, I had a really good conversation with some of the W W L staff recently because I wanted to understand, taking really seriously this issue of how good is our water and what are the safeguards against something going wrong with our drinking water? And they walked me through all the issues around the alarm systems, the way in which the, the water supply actually gets stopped if the, if the chlorine treatment drops below a certain level, which is the level which required keeping E. coli out. And it gave me a lot of comfort that that is done and needs to keep on being done. And so water quality is not our driver. It's things around the asset management, how much money needs to be spent. Waste water discharge into, into streams and harbours and so on. I do have concerns in the, in the reforms about the level of of, of service that's being suggested and the cost of that level of service. Because I can see the likelihood is that small rural areas will cost a very large amount of mon, of money for the country to upgrade. Is that the best investment for New Zealand Inc.? I don't know. Is it a better investment for New Zealand Inc. than, you know, seismic resilience in Wellington City? I don't know. But I can see the tensions that will be in the system in that conversation. I think there's a general acceptance that the degree of amalgamation and increasing in size up to a point will bring efficiencies. But there is a lot of debate in the community and I would share that debate, that some incredulity about the scale of the efficiencies which are being suggested and also the fact that there are no efficiencies being suggested in any other model, no gains from the counterfactual. And I don't think also there's any acknowledgement of the inefficiencies, inefficiencies potentially in the system, like the integration between water and, and councils. I mean, we're going to have to, for example, if we roll out a huge amount of investment in water in our streets alongside Let's Get Wellington Moving, there will be some significant integration issues which we've got to make sure get managed well, because otherwise our city will suffer from it. In many ways, we have been ahead of the game as a council. It was 2004 that this council and Hut City Council got together to form capacity. We progressively added to that Apahut, first as a customer and then as a shareholder. And then Greater Wellington, Horirua and, and most, most latterly, South Wireapa. So we've, we've recognised the amalgamation and the benefits of scale and skills that that brings. The question now is what does the best model going forward? The Mural Task Force did agree that we should invest the assets in W W L or in a new Free Waters Reform. The Mural Task Force did agree that we should invest the assets in W W L or in a new Three Waters Reform Unit. The question is, we're not at the stage of going, what's the best option yet? But we are in the stage of saying, here are some issues that we want to raise or not. But the final thing, final thing, if I can, to raise is that one thing I don't see is being raised in this model, and somebody may correct me if I'm wrong, is addressing the critical issue of water allocation. That's probably not such a big issue for Wellington, Wellington region or Wellington City. It's certainly going to be an issue over the hill in the Warrapa. It's certainly going to be an issue in the Hawke's Bay and in areas like Marlborough and Canterbury, you know, those drier areas where you've seen so much of the water taken out of river systems. But that doesn't seem to be being picked up. So in terms of the amendment which is in front of you, I'm not going to go through it in detail. But basically, what I think councillor Rush and I were trying to do is to say, let's tie ourselves back to the, to the recommendations which we've already accepted in terms of the Mural Task Force. Try and be constructive in our feedback to government, saying these are the things you need to do some more work on, and to say that we are happy to continue to work with you on those things. Councillor Rush has done some work on a suggestion, which I'll let him explain about maybe a sub-entity C model, which I'm, I think is interesting. We don't have to work through the details of that, but I think it is worth saying to government, you know, there might be another, another way to, to deal with this. So I'm happy to move this, and then I will pass over to councillor Rush, who I think is going to second.
I will second mercilessly for even mine, I will. I'll speak later.
Okay. You reserve your right. Okay, cool. Right, I'm looking for speakers and if you're speaking, if you're going to move an amendment, I'd suggest we get those on the table fairly quickly, so.
Can Mayor Foster, with the leave of the meeting, can I just suggest that maybe you let Liz Kelly speak now? Because otherwise she has to stay through the whole meeting and that's, yeah, would be, would be kind to let her do that now. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. Right, Liz, do you want to take a three minute, three minute slot?
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to this agenda item, Mayor Foster and councillors, and also to be able to be up first, appreciate that. Given the proposal includes Mana Fenua, I thought it would be useful to publicly hear the position of Nati Toor. So essentially, Nati Toor's aims are wellness of the people, the WAI and the TAO, healthy water, healthy people and a healthy place. Nati Toor support the high-level direction of the proposed reforms. They support the aggregation of asset investment to achieve economies of scale and support Mana Fenua involvement. We like the idea of the Three Waters Ombudsman and Nati Toor accept that there are detailed questions that need to be asked, but not to undermine support for the essential proposal. The key question issue is about how to influence priorities. I guess evidence is clear that local councils have not delivered what we need, healthy water, TAO or people. So council has, has under-invested in the Three Waters infrastructure for many years, and the very high water leakage rates and poor performance of the sewage network are unacceptable and will be expensive to fix, which equals higher rates. And we believe this will be exacerbated in future with the new regulatory requirements, so reform is needed. Nati Toor do not support the notion that assets belong to councils. They were funded by people for an outcome which was to have clean water, et cetera. And whether we fund it through tax rates or levy, it is owned by the people. Essentially, the reforms will swap out one public ownership model for another. Communities want better outcomes, and what is the public losing? There is no loss. The proposal is providing the Putia to develop clean water outcomes and address historical anomalies that are barriers to rectifying problems, flooding issues, stormwater, sewage. New entities are being designed to enable access to more resources sooner, which equates to better outcomes quicker. I believe the next steps is ensure our big projects are moved up to the front of the line to ensure first cab off the rank for funding. This means we are ready and up first, and Moa Point, for an example, could be one of the issues we, we move forward. We need to accept in principle the high-level proposal and leave officers to work on the best financial gain for Wellington City, proposed by government and see what future information government present for decision post the October announcement.
Thank you, Liz. If you want to duck out, feel free. Okay, councillors. Who's first up? Councillor Conde. So you moving, moving an amendment, speaking substantive?
As I understand it, if I move an amendment, I have to speak to the substantive at council, is that correct?
Yep.
So I may need that extra minute, Mayor Foster.
I, I will give you that extra minute.
Um, to start with, I just want to quickly run through the substantive and just what I, I think about this very, very quickly. I think based on how complex items three and four are in the substantive, I'm probably going to be voting against them. I think all of those, those things, they're basically redundant, all of them have been covered in the report, in the Mural Task Force report, and I think that it is quite complex and confusing for councillors who have just received them. I'm also going to probably be, I'm also going to be voting against six A and six B, which is councillor Rush's proposed alternative. Given the officer recommendations that they have some serious concerns about whether it would actually allow for balanced separation, I also have some concerns about building silos into the proposal from the beginning. But I do think, you know, I encourage councillor Rush to share that, his ideas with D I A as an individual. I'm sure they would be happy to hear from them, but I'm not going to support them going forward from council at this point. I just wanted to say that, that the Mural Task Force, in my view, did not hedge on the reforms, as you said, Mayor Foster. I don't, we were not either or on the reforms or doing our own thing. It was very clearly that we should do the reform and we should participate in the reforms. And if the reforms fail, then we should do our own thing. And so that's, I think, a really important thing. It wasn't like, eh, we could do this or we could do that. It was very clearly their advantage just to participating in the government reform. The Mural Task Force report sets out a pathway for us to sort out our ongoing failures in our pipe network to comply with new drinking water regulation and freshwater management regulation and meet rising community expectations for service levels. What we didn't consider was how much this would cost and whether it would be affordable. But the answer is it will cost a lot, and no, it's not really affordable for our communities. In this L T P, for example, we increased spending by $600 million over 10 years, which has a rate impact of about 2.5% per year, and Wellington Water described this as a great start. I describe it as the tip of the iceberg. And these reforms are really about how we can make these massive necessary improvements to our water infrastructure more affordable for our community. The reforms do that in two ways. They aggregate water assets into a large entities that have optimal scale to deliver significant efficiency gains over the coming years. In Wellington, the efficiency gains are currently estimated at potentially 45% of future costs, so they are significant. It also does this by separating the water assets from council balance sheets, so that water entities can borrow significantly more at lower rates, and that spreads the cost fairly over time. So the separation from council balance sheets requires us to reduce the level of, of control from councils. And this is not a matter of legislation, it's actually about international accounting standards and credit rating. So it's not something the government can choose or not choose to do. The amendments that I'm presenting here set out these key issues and express support for the essential elements of the reform, which will make improved water services more affordable for our households. Clearly, the key concern across the country is about loss of local control and local voice. Now, I think localism is great and it definitely has its place, but it's not great for massive infrastructure, which benefits from economies of scale, which is where we are at with these water infrastructure. This was a tension we talked about at, at the task force. We didn't have any of the recommendations, but it was certainly a conversation about how we deal with a desire. There was a clear desire in the community from people like Eugene Doyle to have stronger local voice with a much larger entity that would deliver economies of scale. And my view of potential answer to this is separate the notion of T A, control from local voice. And that local voice doesn't have to come through a territorial authority or a council. There are other ways that local voice can go straight to the water services entity. My amendments provide some, some suggestions about ways that could be achieved, setting up a separate process direct for the community to exercise their local voice without it being filtered through a territorial authority. And I think that the community would be perfectly comfortable with this. I don't think the community particularly cares whether it's the territorial authority that filters these things through or whether it goes directly. But the community wants us to know that.
Can I get you to wind up, please?
Yeah.
Sorry, I've already given you, I've given you the extra minute, I was furiously writing your notes down.
So I think the last thing I want to say is the final bullet point on the list is a little bit technical. I just wanted to say it's related to my concern that some land use decisions lead to higher costs for water infrastructure than others. And if water services entities are going to be planned takers, we need some mechanism to make sure that TAs are actually making land use decisions that deliver cheaper water infrastructure where it's possible.
Sense.
Thank you.
Thank you. No, second is.
Councillor Matthews.
Councillor Matthews, do you want to speak on the amendment?
I'll reserve my right.
Okay, cool. Anyone else on the amendment? Councillor Fitzsimons. Councillor, and then councillor Calvert.
Yeah, I just want to start by thanking councillor Conde for bringing this amendment and for her concerted work on the Mural Task Force and, and the development of this amendment. I think that this debate that's playing out here in Wellington and across the country actually makes the compelling case for the reforms. And it shows that local government isn't fit for purpose, that too often, local government makes decisions which are about its own future, not what's in the best interests of people. And I want to really acknowledge the comments of Liz Kelly about who owns water assets. Water assets and water infrastructure exists for people. Those people are the same people who vote in local government elections and central government elections. And I just want to combat the notion that we are not at risk of a Havlock North type scenario. We have just seen constant problems with our water infrastructure. Havlock North didn't think they had a problem with quality drinking water until it happened to them. These reforms are making sure it doesn't hap, about, doesn't happen to us. I think that it's really important to consider the context. We've had constant burst pipes in Wellington. We've had the Feral Bay stream being polluted, regulators not understanding it. We've had failures in the water system. We've got huge leakage in our network and Wellington Water can't even meet the most basic standards that we set for it. This council has dismally failed to invest and protect our water infrastructure assets. And the cost of what needs to be done is staggering. We have no moral authority as a council on this issue. I really get the sense that a lot of the comments about local control are actually about protecting local government. And to me, local government as an institution is not important in and of itself to protect. What's important to protect is the things that people need, and that is good water infrastructure. I think that change is urgent and it's necessary, and we should be engaging as constructively as we can. And I, and I think that's what councillor Conde's amendments are about. I also thank her for raising the international accounting standards and the importance of credit rating agencies, because I've heard some councillors say, oh, well, the government can just change the law. It's not the reality, we're actually operating in a much bigger system here. And I just wanted to finally say that I do think that it's important to reflect on the Havlock North example. I've had people contact me recently saying their father was very badly, became very badly ill because of what happened in Havlock North. We know there's a problem, we have to act, change is coming, and we need to be constructively engaged in making sure that change delivers for people, because that's what this is all about in the end. I certainly, for one, don't trust local government to manage our water infrastructure in the future.
Thanks, councillor, and thanks for keeping, keeping the time over. Councillor Calvert, Day and Rush.
I'm just confirming, I'm only just talking to the amendment.
Amendment only, yes, please.
Thank you. So look, I'm not going to support these. I think it's quite ironic that councillor Conde said about a level of detail in, in the substantive recommendations of three and four, and yet what we're seeing here is more, even more detail. So I, I know, I've been through them. I think number 11 is very much the same as two A, just probably worded a bit differently. So I think there's a level of detail and, and there's a level of assumption that we will definitely be going down the reform path, which I don't believe we can make at the moment. So it, it may well be that some of these recommendations are very valid when we have more information from government. But I think what this is highlighting is that we haven't had sufficient information at this stage. So to direct it down to this level of detail, I think, is premature. So I won't be supporting these amendments for this paper today.
Thank you, councillor Day.
Kauta kauta, so I'm just speaking to these amendments. And I want to begin by acknowledging and thanking councillor Fitzsimons for being the initial bell ringer for the issues that we were facing as a council. So it was not really that long ago that councillor Fitzsimons and I brought the notice of motion to ask for a review, and then the Mural Task Force was established. So I would like to thank you councillor Fitzsimons, you've started quite a big ball rolling. And it's a really important one, because as we, as we know, this is about people's health and wellbeing, and we, we want people to be well. I'd like to acknowledge also councillor Conde's mahi on the task force. I know councillor Conde, you had to put in a lot of work there to help pull things together, and you really do understand it inside out. When I hear you talk about water, I know that you understand what you're saying and that you have a really good concept of the big picture. And I think that's really important, this is about big picture. And I know that people might be concerned about details and amendments or how this is going. But actually, all of these amendments are really trying to bring us back to the big picture, which is super important when we're talking about water that transcends any boundaries that we set, no matter what they are now or in the future. It has to be about the fact that it's about the Y, W A I. It's not about, it's not about our boundaries and who has, has control where. It's about making sure that we are looking at that, that full picture. And I also want to comment on Mayor Foster saying that we're not Havlock North with regards to the drinking water. We may not currently have imminent water issues, we hope, as councillor Fitzsimons said. Obviously, other entities haven't picked that up and it's happened. But our future supply in Wellington of drinking water is, is seriously compromised. And I think people don't really realise that actually our aquifer is, it's under, under strain. And we have to be really cognisant of that. And I think it's important that we don't just relax and think that we've been doing a good enough job to make sure that we're going to have good water supply in the future. I also agree with councillor Fitzsimons that, you know, when we're looking at the way that we approach this, which is why these amendments are really important, that we're not focused on how we fit into it at this point. That needs to come along the way, but we need to make sure that the decisions we're making are the best decisions for our people and our environment, as Liz Kelly said. I'm going to leave it there, because I am going to speak again to the substantive soon, but yeah, very happy to support these.
Thank you. Councillor Rush.
Thank you, Bishop. Several of the comments from councillor Conde, I will address in my reply, just on the amendment, I'm broadly supportive. But it does make me wonder, it does seem to be a bit of a tension between the, around the council table, and yet we're all trying to want, we all want the same thing. And I'm broadly seeing a lot of what I was trying to put in my amendments, or the mayor's substantial suppose, reflected in councillor Conde's amendment. So I actually think that we're pretty much all on the same page, a lot more aligned than we normally are. But nevertheless, we're having this polarised theatrical debate anyway. Couple of things, talking on amendment number 11. Yes, the area C is very close, or it's, I think, close to a million. So it could drop down between 600 and 800,000. And I suppose that would be what would happen if we dropped Hawke's Bay, Gisborne out. Seems like the Hawke's Bay guys do want to do their own thing. So there is some flexibility there. The local control and increase, I think councillor Conde, you're absolutely right. If we do have control over this beast, then we will have problems with the credit agencies and so on. But there are ways to address that, pretty, pretty standard ways, using conventions. I don't think that's a showstopper. I just want to say a few words about, in response to councillor Fitzsimons. In reality, over, over, well over 100 years, Wellingtonians have had a water supply that's been delivered with that wastewater treatment that is now closer to where we want it to be 30 years ago. If you swam in Lisle Bay, I hear if you surfed there, you would find things there that you did not want to be surfing with. So actually, there's a lot of good things that we have done. We are now building a reservoir at a model, we are looking at water meters in order to ensure that we have better supply and we are fixing those leaks. So I think there's a lot to be proud of. You do single out a couple of years' worth of pretty poor breakage in the salt, which Wellington Water have absolutely outstandingly fixed. And so whilst there has been some disappointments, I think on the whole, this is a network that has performed superbly over 100 years for Wellingtonians. Nevertheless, there has been under-investment. That's all I'm going to say, I'm broadly supportive of these amendments and I welcome them, thank you councillor Conde.
Cool. Councillor Matthews then, Panet. councillor Matthews, then, Pannett.
Kia ora kato. I guess, just to address that initially, you know, I welcome the sort of constructive and positive approach that you've had councillor Rush around Wellington Water. But I do think the enormity of the problems that we face do require, obviously, substantial change. But actually, we're at the phase of beginning to understand the nature of the problem, rather than in any way having fixed it. You know, and all credit to everyone involved at this point. But really, you know, we had no choice and no argument to make because of the situation we found ourselves in with the failures. So I think that, you know, while I appreciate the positive attitude, and I too am an optimist, I think that we are really just at the beginning of the process. I really just want to thank and acknowledge councillor Conde also for her detailed grasp of these issues and sensible approach to giving us a steer forward. And I guess these amendments are about giving constructive directions to officers in line with our existing policies and strategies to get the best outcomes possible for Wellingtonians. And actually, I think that these are the way forward for reducing costs, increasing accountability, increasing co-governance opportunities with mana whenua, and increasing environmental protection. So I think, you know, across the board, there is a lot of opportunity for us here. And these recommendations don't assume a done deal, but they are not putting roadblocks in the way to getting a deal, which is best for Wellingtonians. And I really think that when we put too many roadblocks in the way, we need to be very careful, because there is actually not a viable Plan B at this point. And I really don't see that in any of the options that people are discussing. So, you know, I think there's kind of some straw man alternatives at the moment. And we should actually be engaging in good faith with the process that we have. And these amendments are an attempt to do that. And I just want to echo councillor Fitzsimons' concerns about sort of turf protection from local government. And, you know, that actually, that public ownership is the most, you know, important thing, and we do need to preserve that. But we do not have a monopoly. And actually, we are, you know, in terms of the engagement that we have on the things that we do, you know, it's not always great. And local government is not equal to community input or local control at all. It really isn't. And so, you know, I think there's real opportunity for improvements here, and these amendments are to shape that. So I hope you support them.
Thank you, councillor. Good timing there. councillor Pannett, and then I think we'll go to right reply.
Thank you, mayor Foster, and thank you councillor Conde and Matthews for putting up your amendments. So I'll be no surprise that I won't be supporting these amendments. And for the big reason which no one has mentioned yet, is that we are going through an unprecedented amount of reform at the moment. We're an incredibly undemocratic reform, where democratic bodies like the DHBs or the council, within some limits, are being fundamentally disempowered. Power has been centralised under this majority Labour government without much thinking about how we distribute power in this country. And I do not and will never support a strongly centralised state. I get concerned when we hear the Tina argument, there is no alternative. There are always alternatives to the way that we manage structures and manage resources. And it's highly ironic that we're soon going to be debating a paper where we have some concerns around the way that Waikatoi is behaving, where we cannot meet our environmental obligations, because we are having to deal with a large state entity which doesn't share our aspirations. It is also, I think, important to note that the context which we're operating in is a result of major neoliberal reforms spearheaded by both Labour and National, which have meant that we haven't invested properly. Some of us have tried, of course, but, you know, it has been a very difficult context. And 30 years ago, there was some more money going in. I want to make it clear that I'm not supporting just the role of local government for the sake of preserving an institution. That's not what I'm interested in at all. What I'm interested in is democracy. And I do not trust both major parties to preserve our assets. Only the Greens and probably the Maori Party are the ones that will do that. There has been a terrible history in this country of very, very valuable assets being sold off. And central government has massively failed in the environmental area. The list that we could start articulating, we've gone for a very, very long time. The reason our waters are polluted is just as much the responsibility. I do just want to just briefly raise some concerns about this idea that there will be competition, you know, being first off the cap of rank. These entities are too large to make sure that everyone gets a fair go. If we end up competing with each other, you know, things are going to drop off the list. Last two points. I acknowledge the concerns of mana whenua. I think it's good to be held to account. But again, all our institutions have failed mana whenua. This is not the only one. And I'm, you know, I'm not convinced by the argument that this is the only way to exercise co-governance. We've started on that road and we can continue. Wellington Water has done some really good things. Can I just remind you that actually, when it came to things like climate change and earthquake resilience, you didn't actually have much to say in the Mural Task Force. Yes, we should have spent more money. We were told that, you know, that we were doing okay by our experts, the same experts that are now in the water regulator and will be working for these entities. They're not going to be different experts, they'll be the same people. And we worked in line with community expectations, where the environment was a rubbish dump.
councillor, if I could get you to wind up, we've got 30 seconds.
Yep, that's all I need. And so we acted within those expectations. Some of us have tried very, very hard over many, many years to improve the environmental performance, but have been blocked, actively blocked. So I will be supporting mayor Foster's, some of his amendments, and hoping that we can have a different conversation about how to manage this precious resource. Kia ora.
Thank you. councillor Foon, I see you've put your hand up.
Kia ora tato, and thank you councillor Conde for bringing these today. I'm also broadly assertive, supportive, but I would like to take them separately. I acknowledge there's a crossover between councillor Rush's and some of councillor Conde's, but thank you both for working and bringing these. I'm more in the camp of just not pushing too assertively. Thank you for bringing these councillor Conde, but I just want to walk alongside the process at this stage. And I also just want to just see that it's a critical opportunity to engage in how we go forward and that what we are dealing with right now is just simply, we can't go forward with it, just understanding what's going on in Porirua, let alone our own situation. Yes, we've got a long way to go. So this is a good starting point, but thank you.
Thanks councillor Foon. councillor deputy mayor.
Yes, I will be supporting some, but not all of councillor Conde and Matthews amendments. I understand the intent, but for me, I'm uncomfortable noting or agreeing to things where I think there's actually still pace to be proved or more information required. I know that will happen in due course. So the ones I don't vote for will be on that basis. And that's all I probably need to say.
Nice to the point. So we will take them separately. councillor Conde, write a reply.
Thank you. Yeah, I guess I would encourage you to take them separately. It's the reason that I wrote them that way, so that you can take them separately. And so I would, you know, people who want to vote against some of them, I really would encourage you to do that. I think it's also going to be useful feedback for DIA to see which bits, you know, get stronger support. So that's great. That's the whole point of this, is to provide some feedback. I really want to be really clear about that we need to stop conflating this idea that council control is the same as local voice. And that's really what councillor Matthews and councillor Fitzsimons have been talking about, that local government and its own sake, you know, councils on their own sake don't actually, you know, aren't on their own an important and good thing. It's what they deliver and what they do for people that is important and good. And so this is, this is not about patch predicting. And I think, you know, the fundamental gist of my feedback to DIA is exactly that, that we need to, as they move forward, I really want them to think about how they can start to separate those two conversations and think about how we can actually increase local voice without increasing the TA control. councillor Calvert, thank you for your comments. I agree that the process has been a bit messy and, you know, there are details, a lot of details in my amendments that have come through at the last minute, and that some of them do overlap with councillor Rush. I think that's just the reality, that I wrote mine having not seen his. You know, so that's, that's part of how this goes. It's, you know, but unfortunate maybe that we didn't have a process to kind of collaborate and be able to actually work these all through in terms of our suggestions. But here we are. It's fine. We'll, we'll, we'll get there. I also just wanted to say, I don't have an assumption that we will go down the reform process. It's not an assumption that it's, it's a good faith commitment. I wouldn't say that I'm assuming we're going to go forward, but I am making a good faith commitment that I think the reforms are trying to achieve certain things around affordability that are really important, and that I'm trying to then get into a constructive conversation with DIA about how they could address some of the concerns that have been coming forward. I think that's pretty much all that I need to say at this point. You know, I'm not too concerned. I really just wanted to bring these amendments so that we could have this conversation and it's kind of my, this is my personal take on it. As with councillor Rush's amendments, if some of these don't get through, I'll probably just send an email off to Alan Pragnell and with some of my ideas, because that's fine as well. But I just wanted to have a chance for us to have this conversation as a council and as a group. So thank you for the debate. I really appreciate it and look forward to your votes.
Thank you. Heidi, can you pop the amendments up so we can see them all? Right. Okay. And then, so well.
Sorry, mayor Foster, I forgot to just point out, I didn't mean to do this, that I did make the two changes suggested during the councillor, the question time with officers.
So where have you made those?
So I did make a change, Heidi, where it says, oh, in 11, I've said it's based on DIA analysis. That was your suggestion, mayor Foster. And then those bullet points, which the opposition said needed to be read together, I've just combined them into one, so that it's one.
Okay, cool. Right, brilliant. Thank you. And I'm presuming that we're not going to take bullet points separately. I suppose we might, yeah, if people re-insist, but otherwise I'll take, I'll take them. Are people happy? I'll just go eight, nine, 10, et cetera.
Providing we can see it on the screen at the time. Sorry, can we, can we take each separately? Sorry, I know it's a pain, but.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Yeah, cool. Okay. So Heidi, can you go up to the top, please? Right. Okay. Right. So if you would like to, to vote, please, on eight.
Waiting on a vote from councillor Calvert. So that has carried eight in favour, seven against. Mayor Foster, councillor Calvert, councillor Foon, Sparrow, Young and Wolf against.
Okay, thank you. Nine.
So that has carried nine in favour, six against. Deputy mayor free, councillor Calvert, councillor Pannett, councillor Young, Rush and Wolf against.
18.
We've got it. That has carried 12 in favour, three against. Councillor Pannett, Young and Wolf against.
Okay, 11.
Waiting on votes from councillor Paul. That's everyone. So that has failed. Eight, eight votes against and seven votes for, with councillor Fitzsimons, Conde, Day, Foon, Matthews, Paul and O'Neill in favour.
Thank you. Can somebody who's got their, who's not muted, if they can mute themselves, please? Okay, 12.
So that has lost nine votes against and six votes in favour. That is councillor Fitzsimons, Conde, Day, Matthews, Paul and O'Neill in favour.
Heidi, I should have asked you this at the beginning. Are you noting who's voted which way and keeping those notes?
Yes, that's why I'm verbalising, so that I can watch the live stream later. Everything will be done by division.
Yeah, you're done. Thank you. 13.
Just waiting on a vote from councillor Young. So that has carried 12 votes in favour, three against, with councillor Calvert, Sparrow and Young against.
Thank you. Now councillors, unless somebody wants me to take any given bullet point separately, I propose to take the 14 together. I don't see anybody wanting me to take them separately. Okay, cool. Right. Thank you. If you can vote, please.
That's waiting on a vote from councillor Sparrow. Thank you. That has carried 13 in favour, two against, with councillor Calvert and Young against.
Thank you. Okay, well, that gets us through First Amendment. Okay, I think we're going now to Second Amendment, which I think is from councillors Day and Paul.
Kia ora kato. I'll just wait for that to come up so people can see what I'm speaking to.
Thank you.
I don't actually think I need to say heads to it, because I think actually what Liz said earlier really does encapsulate pretty well the position of Maori, Iwi in Wellington. I think it's important, though, that we have that there, because the Mural Task Force did draw out some really good conversation with mana whenua. And actually, that is quite confronting to read, but it is the reality. We, we haven't necessarily done quite right by Maori, but also by just people. Our water services have, have not been as great as some people might like to believe. We've had quite a few failures in the last few years, and we know that our system is struggling. And I think it's really important that we, that we listen to the voice of mana whenua and that actually, we are focused on making sure that mana whenua are central and involved in where we go forward. So it's really important that it is included in, in this, in this debate. And so that's why these amendments are here. And I think it's really important. So obviously, the First Amendment is really looking at, you know, at what has happened and how that's been recorded through the Mural Task Force. And the Second one is really talking about what we're doing going forward and how Maori will be able to, to participate and how that will feed through processes such as tamanu o te wai, and also making sure that we are living up to our promises through tiriti o wai tangi as a nation. And so I think, yeah, these really speak for themselves. And thank you councillor Paul for seconded.
councillor Paul, do you wish to speak? councillor Paul? Can't hear you. councillor Paul, if you can just put thumbs up, do you wish to speak or not?
I'll let Reid, she's going to.
It's all right.
Okay, right, okay. I've got councillor Sparrow. Okay, right, okay. Right, okay. I've got councillor Sparrow.
Thank you. Can I address a question to councillor Day or is this the?
Uh, you can either decide whether you want to speak to it and raise a question in speaking, or you can ask a question of the meaning of the motion.
Right, well, okay, I'll interpret this as you wish, but I'm interested in knowing what this is actually, um, adding. Whether this is, this is the first amendment I'm speaking to, not the second one. So what it's adding, whether it is in fact necessary or helpful and whether in fact it is not casting, perhaps casting a slur on our forebears, implying that, and implying that we could have done things better. So it's basically, that's a comment or a question.
I, I think I'm going to take that, I think I'm going to take that as a comment. So if there's anything else you want to speak, uh, to councillor Sparrow, then I'd just do it now.
No, well, um, councillor Day can address that and write a reply, but those are my comments then, if you like.
Okay, thank you. Okay, again, speaking councillor Matthews.
Uh, very briefly, I just want to thank, um, councillor Paul and councillor Day for putting this amendment up. Um, I want to thank, um, Liz Kelly and Ngati Toa very much for making their position clear and, um, it's really great to have them around the table. And I also just want to note, and I think regardless of your position on these reforms, that we can all note that a, a small number of the opposition, um, we are getting is quite racist in nature and that, um, it's quite disappointing to see. And I think that's something that we can all agree that is unfortunate that it is happening. And I'm not, um, trying to say that everybody who's opposed to these reforms, that is the issue, but, um, definitely it has been a disappointing aspect to a, a small minority of it. And, uh, just shows that we have some way to go to build our understanding.
Thanks councillor Matthews. Uh, councillor, um, councillor Paul, do you want to jump in now? I saw your hand went up, so you're.
In the queue. Is, am I, is it working now?
It's now working, yes. You can go. So you can, you jump it, do you want to jump in now or do?
Oh, no, I'm all in the queue.
Okay, well, so put your hand back up again, then it'll, it'll put you in the right place in the queue. Cool. Okay. So I've got, what I've got then is councillor Rush, Condi, Penet, Paul.
Yeah, I mean, not suggesting I'm echoing councillor Sparrow's comments, but, um, certainly, uh, there's no reason to suggest that the statement made in 15 is wrong at all. Um, but nevertheless, um, we've a city that went from several dozens of people to several hundreds and now supports several hundreds of thousands or two, a hundred, three hundred odd thousand people. Um, each of whom can get fresh water delivered by a tap, uh, the hot showers and so forth. So that's, that's not bad. Um, but nevertheless, I, I think that the crux of that particular statement was that decisions were made to divert investment that should have gone in water and that would have produced better outcomes for our city. With, I, I certainly support that. Um, just in your write a reply councillor, um, Day, um, just in respect to the second paragraph, we talk about the support of co-governance. Can you please elaborate? Because we've talked about the different types of co-governance and we certainly have co-governance around our table. Are you saying that we should support the arrangement set out by the, uh, minister in the current proposal whereby there's a, uh, six elected people and six Iwi who will feed into the, the entity as it is? Or are you suggesting that co-governance in a, in a manner that is yet to be firmed up and to be, um, uh, I suppose agreed upon?
Okay, that you can deal with that and write a reply, please councillor Day. Uh, councillors Condi, Penet, Paul and the deputy mayor.
Kia ora, thank you. And thank you councillor Day for bringing these amendments. Um, I feel like I could actually catch my breath when I was speaking last time. I was going a mile a minute. Um, I think this is a, a really great part of, of the reforms to see. I think it shows, um, what a post treaty settlement alteroa might start to look like. Um, I think it takes really seriously what, what it looks like to, um, uphold our obligations on the te tiriti. Um, and how we can, you know, share, um, share governance with, with Maori. Um, I note that there certainly have been lots of, um, conversations, um, within mana finua and Maori groups about how that should work. Um, I'm certainly, um, very open to Liz Kelly's advice that she gave us yesterday, which is that that's an issue for Maori, for them to figure out how they want that to work. Um, and so I'm, I'm, you know, very flexible, sort of saying that, that from, at least from my point of view, I absolutely support co-governance. But I'm also very open to that, that mana finua need to be the ones to figure out what's going to work for them. Um, but I think that that's absolutely consistent with, with the amendment that you have here. I will acknowledge, I think that statement from, from the task force from mana finua is really, really quite confronting. But I do think it is important to, to remember that, that the mana finua statement at the start of the Mural Task Force report was very strong. Um, they made a very strong statement, um, that, uh, about the case for reform. And I think that Liz Kelly has echoed that again today, that Ngati Toa are very much on board with the case for reform. Um, and it's, so I, I support having that there because I think, um, you know, we, at the moment, we don't have a, a member from Taranaki Fanoi Te Upuu here today because, you know, we still haven't kind of managed to get that happening. So I think it is important to remember, we have heard from mana finua on this issue. This is what they had to say when, when they were on the Mural Task Force. So it is, you know, useful for us to, to remember that that's kind of, that's their most recent position on this. Um, thank you.
Thanks councillor Condi, uh, councillor Penet, Paul and the deputy mayor.
Um, thank you councillor Day. Look, I think this is useful. I think, you know, we're all to be held to account and I think that's, um, a useful thing. Um, and I just want to acknowledge and point out that there have been many people that have tried to support good environmental outcomes. Um, and obviously we're on a journey here. Um, can I just clarify? Uh, sorry, I would have asked Liz if she was still here, um, but whether she sees that there's any responsibility from central government as well and, um, the communities in which we live, uh, generally Wellington water doesn't actually actively pollute the streams. It's our, often our land use, um, practices and policies. Kia ora.
Thanks councillor Penet. Uh, councillor Paul.
Yeah, kia ora. Sorry, I don't know what happened there. Um, but, um, unfortunately I didn't hear Malcolm's questions. I think I could have responded to some of them. But basically I just wanted to thank councillor Day for bringing these amendments and, and for people who have been doing mahi in the background and Liz for bringing the Ngati Toa perspective forward. Um, I just wanted to reflect quickly on a, um, workshop I facilitated briefly over the weekend at, um, at a church in Wellington and, um, there were some really interesting points and, um, one main concern that was raised is some of the kind of alarmist rhetoric that's coming from certain parts of the country about Maori rights to, to water. And this idea that keeps coming up that Maori never, don't have rights and never had any claim on water assets. And I think the rights of Maori to co-govern natural resources has been fought for and documented and stemmed back as far, um, to 1985, to the Manoko Harbour claim where, um, the Auckland Council was pumping faeces into the Manoko Harbour. Um, and now, you know, you look at the states of, the state of Auckland's beaches and waterways, and that is not the future that we want for Wellington. And that were, that was Maori rangatira pushing for the recognition of the inherent value of waterways. So no, there might not be claims necessarily to the water assets, but Maori have been a voice for the water for a long time. And so this is about recognizing that voice and those values and the rights of Maori to be able to co-govern are not up for negotiation through this, through this process. They have been won through settlements and through agreements and have been well established. Um, so that's why I'm glad that Minister Mahuta is leading this because she is well aware of those rights and is exercising them as such. Um, I think it's really important to mention te tiriti because that has, um, provisions within it to look at ka Wanataanga, which is co-governance. And the important part about that is working from a conciliatory approach as opposed to one that is based on conflict and working together and actually acknowledging that nobody owns water. Um, you know, if anything, water will probably own us into the future. So it's about how do we live with and care for our tangai. So I think there are still different decisions to be, to be made. And like you said, um, Mia, this morning, um, hea hata, ka, kaia te rangatira, he kore ro. Yes, talking and conversations and conciliatory and patient, tolerant approaches and listening to what each other has to say is what we need right now. And as the minister says, we need open-mindedness. So I think we should just all hold off on taking really big stances and making big statements about what Maori want because the reality is Maori and the government are still developing what that approach looks like and we need to afford them the patience to find, um, an approach and a model that works for everybody and that leaves our waterways in a state that our mokupuna can swim in and, um, that can give them value in their lifelong into the future and for generations to come. So yeah, kia ora everyone.
Thanks Tam. Uh, deputy mayor.
Yeah, um, thanks. I'm really happy to support, um, 16. With 15, I feel that it's making quite a political strong statement and I wonder if it's, uh, why it's really been put there. We know that that was said. Um, we're very aware of that. Um, but I do find it a bit, um, perhaps a bit pointed, um, to stick it in there. And I also think that we're still in a political system now. So to criticize the political nature of local politics is to kind of overlook the actual essence of local politics. Um, we're evolving and hopefully doing things better all the time. But, but politics is about, I guess, the pressure to respond to what our communities are suffering. And, um, you know, we do that the best we can. We certainly have been left in, no doubt that the water is something we do need to address. But I do think that this is quite pointed and is possibly a little bit unfair. I think councillor Penet might have tried to make some of those points. Um, you know, it leaves me in a position where I'll probably support it because to do so doesn't look, um, gracious. But actually I think to put it in here isn't particularly gracious either.
I've got councillor Fitzsimons and councillor O'Neill.
Yeah, I just wanted to pick up on that point, um, and reinforce that I think it's really important and it's really important that we hear that. And it's the reality whether or not this resolution passes. And it might feel uncomfortable for some of us, um, but that's good. We should feel uncomfortable about this because our water infrastructure is in crisis and local politics has served a role in delivering that crisis. We didn't even know that depreciation wasn't being used for renewals. Wellington Water and the Mural Task Force uncovered and exposed a massive under-investment and neglect of our water infrastructure. So did the reviews that the chief executive, um, conducted into the relationship between Wellington Water and Wellington City Council. It said that we didn't have the expertise to be able to engage with Wellington Water properly. There has been a failure and I thank councillor Day and mana finua for being, um, so clear and so brave in the way that they express that failure to us. And I will be supporting it. Um, and I encourage others too, because these are the sort of hard conversations that we need to have and we need to understand and we need to be accountable for if we're going to make decisions in other areas about the future of Wellington.
Thanks councillor, uh, Fitzsimons, councillor O'Neill.
Um, thank you. I just wanted to kind of, uh, speak in support of this amendment and also I really thank councillor Day, Liz Kelly and, um, councillor Tam Paul for their work and their service. Not only do, um, have we had quite a few growing pains, um, this, uh, this term of local government, but also are we realizing a lot of the depreciations? And I think both my other ward councillors can agree that in the past, um, we've seen, um, a lot of, uh, faeces and degradation of our own natural environment. Now, we're very coastal, um, and pretty much everybody in here can agree that we've probably responded to a crisis in water and why and a lack of protection, whether that be a broken wear, an accident or, um, or other kinds of pollution. And I just must speak how valuable it is, one, that we acknowledge that we would take responsibility and we haven't always been the quickest to act. And two, um, that we acknowledge that the place of why and caring for water has long been fought by, um, panga te finua in alteroa. And that, um, yeah, as Tam said, she quoted one example, but there are many, many, many more examples where unfortunately we've dropped the ball. Um, and that's based, but I'd just like, um, yeah, I'd encourage a deputy mayor free to reflect on how we are taking responsibility and responding to that.
Um, forgiveness was actually not our failure as well, entirely.
Thanks, deputy mayor. We'll try and keep the interjections out, please. Okay, I, I'm going to, I'm going to, um, put myself in just briefly. Um, uh, so, uh, councillor, uh, councillor Day and Paul, thank you for bringing this. I, I'm, I'm, I am interested in your write a reply and that'll decide how I, I vote on both of these. Um, the, the first bit is I, I understand the concerns that some people are raising about the issue, which does look, it's very confronting. It does look a bit like self-flagellation. I would absolutely acknowledge that there has been under-investment over an extended period of time. Uh, however, um, saying that, you know, the, the information was never really presented in a way which sort of suggested that that will be, that was the case. But I think I'd also like to recognize that standards have risen and, you know, you go back to the, the early days of Wellington City and it, you know, it was just essentially bore water and, um, uh, and, you know, take water out of streams and then people started getting waterborne diseases and cholera and typhoid and things of that nature. Um, you know, when I started on council, we had sewage on the beaches every day. The whole, the whole of our sewage treatment system discharged onto the beaches at Laobait every day. Um, and we, this was a major issue for, for many, many years and we fixed it. Um, so we have invested significantly there. We've invested significantly in upgrading a lot of our, our, you know, what was also there was regular discharge into the, into the harbour. Not, not the occasional discharge we now have, but regular. Um, so we put a $70 million pollution elimination program in through the, through the nineties, nearly 2000s. Um, and then also there's been significant investment, particularly in water, uh, the resilience of our water network, both in terms of pipes, but also in terms of water reservoirs. So, you know, that puts our city in a much better place if the, um, uh, if there's a major earthquake. And of course, Omararo is the biggest of those. So it's not like there's been neglect in those ways. I think it's just it's an increasing understanding of the, the need that we need, uh, more investment across the board. The other point to make there is of course, if there had been that increased investment, what would have dropped off? Or would the rates have been that much higher earlier? It's not as though that, that money's gone nowhere. That money has, that could have been used there, has gone into something, you know? Um, and is it some of the built infrastructure around our city, the libraries, the rec centres, the, you know, the whatever it might be, is it our, you know, some of our investment that would be made in our transport infrastructure, whatever you might want to say. We don't have that parallel universe to know what, you know, whether the rates would have been that much higher or whether, um, something else would have been done over a period of time. The other point I wanted to make, which I do have some difficulty with that first one and councillor Day, I'll be interested in your write a reply there, um, is that I think central government also wears, um, a considerable role in this as well. Um, not only have they encouraged us at times to, to focus, uh, on core, um, core infrastructure, which of course this is, um, but they've certainly beaten it, we've certainly been beaten up for levels of rates increases. Um, but they've also, the central government has sort of tried to walk away from some things, particularly around, um, the, the response. If there's a major earthquake, I think they are trying to get out of the 6040 arrangement paying for, um, uh, for, you know, damage to the system and, you know, and, and putting it back together again. So I, I do think they have a role there. And I have been reminded that pre 1989, the government used to invest a significant amount of water. I don't know how much it was, but that disappeared under the whole, you know, Rogeronomics, um, arrangement. So that neoliberal thing that I think councillor Penet raised earlier. So it's not as though central government hasn't, you know, could have been more helpful, like it's over a period of time. Um, and in respect to the second one, I'd be interested in your thoughts. If, if your co-governance there means co-governance, generally I'm perfectly comfortable with that. If it means co-governance in the way in which it's currently set out in the proposition that we have in front of us, I find that a bit troubling because frankly, the, the model that we've got in front of us gives nobody any power. And that's, that, that does disturb me. Everybody is set to, it's a complicated mess of a, of a system. Um, and I don't know how that's going to work. Uh, it, it keeps everybody, whether it's local government or Iwi, two layers divorced from the, um, from the actual board. I think essentially the governance would be the board responding to the regulators, um, rather than to anybody else. I think where Iwi and mana finua do get a, a say, which I think is a valuable say, is that sort of side bit about water quality, uh, which is sitting alongside of the governance. But I think that's a really valuable, uh, input because I, I completely echo what councillor Paul has said, that we do all want to have good, clean, um, water in our rivers and harbours. And I, I take of that. So interested in your write a reply to councillor Day. Over to you.
Whew, there's quite a lot there. Um, so I guess I just need to start by responding to councillor Sparrow in, um, just questioning how it's okay to accept, um, the references to the mayor's task force and, um, numbers three and four that councillor Rush has put forward, but not to accept this particular part of the report, which we also accepted at the time. So, um, you know, this was accepted as a statement in the report. Actually, the full, um, mana finua statement, when you read it, it is confronting. It's confronting because harm has occurred. Uh, we can't deny that colonization was a very harmful process for Maori. Maori were blocked from the decision-making process. And if we don't acknowledge that and articulate it, then it's really hard for us to learn. Um, and, um, we need to make sure that those mistakes aren't repeated. Um, I also want to acknowledge, um, councillor Matthews, you are correct that the, but one of the reasons that I feel it's really important to bring this out is that a number of the bits of correspondence we're receiving are actually, that the racist undertones are not undertones, they're overtones, they're strong. Um, and I think that actually it's important that there are times where we stand up and we say, actually, no, that is not okay. Um, we've accepted that we need to do better for Maori and we're going to make sure that we are really clear about, clear about that. Um, to councillor Rush, um, around the co-governance, you're absolutely right. We need to work it through. And, um, the people who need to work it through are Iwi and we need to stand back and let those conversations happen. Um, I was very fortunate to be at the Timarawata Hui in July, um, where the minister was there alongside DIA, DIA, listening to Maori elected members in Iwi and having discussions about how it could work and what would work for Maori. And I was really impressed with the process and, um, in the listening. with the process and in the listening that was happening was really good. And I just want to thank you councillor Paul for your really constructive part in this in this process today and talking about how the process forward is conciliatory. And I think it's really important that we remember that, that these processes do actually bring things, bring things together in a way that is much more powerful. But actually, and back to councillor Sparrow, we can't do that unless we actually acknowledge that the harm has happened. Maori were not included. And actually, you know, maybe maybe if they had been included, they would have never accepted that poo could be washing up on our beaches. So, you know, like, we're having to go back and fix the past because Maori weren't included. And I just, I want to just acknowledge carefully the comment about being gracious. And I think it is pretty hard because actually, Maori have been gracious for a very long period of time. And it is sometimes important that we acknowledge that we actually have to hear the tough stuff too. And and I think if it makes us feel uncomfortable, it's probably because it's true. And so I think it's really important that we we just sit in that discomfort. We have to sit in discomfort in all sorts of parts of our life and this is one of those. And I just want to say to mayor Foster that, you know, your response about the central government, yes, I'm not saying central government haven't got a part to play in this and the way that they've done things. But right now, we're focused on local government and what we have done. And I'm not going to pass the buck and say, oh, it's someone else's problem too. You know, we have to own that and we have to make sure that we move forward and we don't make the same mistakes. But yeah, I absolutely support that all levels of government need to need to improve, improve on that side. And I think it's just really important to acknowledge that we need to give Ewi the space to be able to do what they need to do to work with government. And we will hear diverse views and that is okay. They're allowed to have diverse views, just like councils are allowed to have diverse views. And we need to sit again in that discomfort and let it work its way through. So, yeah, I hope people are going to support this and can see it for what it is and that we are trying to to do better going forward. Kiora.
Thanks councillor Day. And I did, while you were reading, just go back and have a quick look at the exact wording and you've drawn it straight from the exact wording. So, yeah, from the Mural Task Force. Okay, so do people want to take those separately or together? If somebody wants to take, sorry?
Separately.
Separately, okay. We'll take them separately. I figured that was going to be the case. Okay. Right. Can you vote on fifteen, please?
That has carried eleven votes for, four votes against, with councillors Calvert, Sparrow, Young and Wolf against.
Okay, thank you. So we go to sixteen.
That has carried ten votes for, five votes against, with councillor, oh, hold on, we've got a vote from councillor Fitzsimons in the last two votes. Councillor Fitzsimons?
I'm in favour. I'm just having a bit of trouble.
Okay, so we've got councillor Fitzsimons, you're in there twice. I see you now. So that's carried. So there is ten votes in favour, five votes against, councillor Calvert, Panet, Young, Rush and Wolf against.
Thank you. Right. Okay, we move now to, do we have any other amendments? We've got one from councillor Calvert. So we can pop that up, please. Okay, thank you. Councillor Calvert, do you want to introduce your amendment, please?
Yes, thank you. And I'll speak to the substantive at the moment. Look, we've been through, I think, not only our council, but others around the country being through a lot of soul searching around water infrastructure. And and it's been good that, you know, the spotlight has been thrown onto it because we certainly don't want to go through what we've been through going forward. But as we know, like with any capital infrastructure, it's going to take a while to fix. I do want to put into perspective some of the issues and I know local government's borne the brunt of it. And even if from a governance level or layer, when you come on board council, you you don't necessarily come with water infrastructure knowledge. And I know we rely on our officers, but then even as organisations, what we do is we rely on the regulators. And let's not forget, the Ministry of Health had the water quality regulator role. And so if they had been doing their job effectively, we may well not have had the Havloch North issue. If the regulator role around service level standards and so those economic aspects, which generally fell onto the office, the auditor general's office and auditors, then we may well have been alerted to some of the issues about investment that we only have recently become aware of. So it's really good to see that the government has acknowledged that and as and is putting in two new regulators, one for water quality, which they've set up, and another one which they're they're calling an economic regulator. So I think now we will have that, those national standards will be in place. And I'm sure that will help whatever form water infrastructure looks like going forward, we will have those standard regulators in place, upping standards all the time. So, so just in terms of substantive, I'm going to support them all, but I won't be supporting six A and six B, probably in line with some of the the other amendments that I haven't supported. I think it's down to a level of detail. It's not really needed for this paper. In terms of my amendments, and you would have seen officers advise them, which perhaps we're trying to soften the the amendments. Now, I want to be quite clear that we need, you know, we need to allow democracy to take place here. We can't change the rules of democracy for a particular matter, albeit how significant it is. So, you know, under under local government legislation, which which government has passed and which we've been working under for close to twenty years now, under the latest iteration, we have
Going to give you another minute, councillor.
Okay, thank you. We have a process in which we deal with engaging with our public. And I know there's going to be some difficult conversations. We're hearing a lot of people against the water forms and what they've heard. But we're also hearing from few people who actually do support it. And we need to make sure that we get good information out there and people have a say. So, and this is what this is about, is actually being quite clear that, and I'm just thinking those amendments are the officers' changes, not my, not mine. And and that's certainly not what should be up there. So I wonder, Heidi, if you could correct that, please?
I'll do that right now.
Thank you. Sorry, I was too busy speaking and not looking at the screen.
You've got about, I'll give you another about thirty seconds then.
Yeah, well, there's probably not much more to say, but really, I look forward to your support. This is about democracy. It's about people having a say, but being actually quite clear with the government that we do want them to have a say. If if government does come back to us with some other suggestive ways forward, then we can relook at it. But in the meantime, I think we need to be quite clear to government that we do expect our communities to have a say in this.
Thank you. Just before I go to councillor Panet a second, I will just get the the amendment up on the screen. Heidi, you in a position to share it? Right, okay. All right, take a moment. Just have a quick look if you want to, councillors. I presume the first bit, that this, that this council?
Yeah, yeah, sorry. That was meant to be taken out. Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay, cool. Right. You're already clear what that's what that's saying. So I've got councillor Panet a second. Do you wish to speak now?
Yes, I do.
And then I've got councillors Conde and Matthews.
So I'd just like to thank councillor Calvert for bringing this up. As you will know, I'm a very strong proponent of doing good consultation. This is a critical issue, you know, one of the biggest decisions that that will impact on local government and on a critical service. So I think it's very important that we do a good, robust amount of consultation. Look, I'm quite relaxed about the wording. I was happy to accept the officer advice. Like, let's just have an efficient but robust consultation process. I just want to be clear now, very publicly, to say that I agree with councillor Day's comments about overt racism, this debate. Yeah, there absolutely is that. And I want to completely separate myself from that. I support co-governance and think that we will get much, much better decision-making with Maori at the table. You know, we absolutely wouldn't have had the problems. And I guess I just, where I think I've earned is that I should have pressed for that participation much earlier. Just the last point on the substantive, look, I'll probably support quite a few of the substantive. My only just gentle plea is that we do have some leadership from this council. It's, I mean, I'm honestly almost begging for someone to be coordinating and having a good conversation with government about the best way forward to transform our water services and the way that the role that local government will have. It's just, local government in New Zealand has been quite weak on this. And I think we need to be coordinated and powerful so that we can have a really good conversation. Kiora.
Thanks councillor Panet. I've got councillors Conde, Matthews and Rush.
Thank you councillor Calvert. I'm afraid that I'm not going to be able to support these, given that they're not consistent with officer advice. I kind of, I'm concerned that, I definitely support consulting with our community. I think it's essential that we consult with our community. But I want to do that in a way that's coordinated with the government reforms, coordinated across all of the councils who are going to be participating. And I don't think we're in a position to guess what that might look like at this stage. And I'm concerned that that's what your, the wording of your amendments does, sort of tries to preempt what that might look like. I would be very supportive of somebody who hasn't spoken yet wanted to foreshadow an amendment to bring the officer, the officer wording, because I would definitely vote for that. I'm quite, quite comfortable with the officer wording that acknowledges that we want to be our consultation to be coordinated with the government plans and with other councils and that we want to be part of that process. I have no problem with that. Thank you.
Thanks councillor, councillor Conde. I'm detecting from a hand that was waved there by councillor Thun that you are happy to do that foreshadowing. Cool. Okay, that's good. So we know that. We will need somebody else to second that foreshadow. Thanks councillor O'Neill. Okay, at least then we get to the position of going, we want to engage, but it's a matter of how we want to engage. But at least we got that choice. Councillors Rush, Thun and Day.
Thanks, Your Worship. I mean, I support democracy and I know that the people's brought are imperfect and may not fit with what might be a process. I'm very concerned, actually, there won't be a process. I know that the cabinet minutes say that the the usual consultation safeguards and democratic opportunities to exercise democracy are not fit for purpose and something more streamlined needs to be done. So, and so I think that this sends a message to the government that actually that's not okay with Wellington City Council. But but we are interested in collaborating and that we do want to to join with others. I also echo just councillor Panet's comment about leadership. When, I've been following these reforms now, well, I suppose since they came out, and I've been crying out for Wellington to take a leading role. And and we just haven't. And I don't want to talk to the substantive that's coming, but that's my attempt at doing something to say to the government, hey, look, we really want to work with you, but we want some ideas. And I don't see anything coming out from any other council other than we're not doing it. And I don't think that's a way forward. So anyway, I'll say more about that with the substantive.
Thanks councillor Rush, councillor Day.
Kiora, so I too won't support this amendment as it is. I saw the one that was put up with the read in it and I thought, oh, yeah, that's, that's good. And then so obviously hearing of this, the officer advice makes a lot of sense. So absolutely, I support talking with communities. But I would prefer to see the process move forward and understand what is the best way to do that. And we need to be consistent across the country because this is obviously a national conversation. And obviously, we will be fitting within the rules that are set around us. But I think it's also important to acknowledge that our current democratic processes don't really work that well. When we see our elections, our election results with fewer than half our population that can vote participating, we know that our processes don't actually necessarily draw out the values and the and the thoughts from all of our community. So we need to think very carefully about how we go through that process. So I would be very happy to support a foreshadowed amendment, but I will not support this one because I don't think this is quite the right tone. And I don't think it sets the right message about where this fits in the process. Kiora.
Thanks councillor Day. What we will do, and I'll take councillor Young and then councillor Thun and O'Neill, you're happy just to, I haven't got your hands up for speaking yet, but you're happy to foreshadow. Cool. Okay, thanks. Councillor Young.
So these kind of debates are my idea of a nightmare with all those amendments flying backwards and forwards and people taking all sorts of stances and reading things into amendments that may or may not have been there. So I just want to say that, you know, I know people have been inundating us with emails. That's great. That's democracy. People think we are voting today on the water reforms. We are not. I'd just like to make that very clear to people because I don't want them to think that we've wussed out. We haven't. But the other thing I would say is just that I am very concerned about the timeframe for consultation. And I think we may find that we have been through the timetable, the government has lain down, we might be squeezed into a corner. So I will be supporting these amendments. And that's really all I have to say because, as you probably know, I don't like long speeches anyway.
Thanks councillor Young. Councillor Thun, you wish to at least say something to put to foreshadow? You're on mute.
Got it. Kiora, yes, like councillor Day, I was happy to support the the first amendment with officer advice. I think it's really important how how this plays out and understanding where we're at in the process. And I just worry that councillor Calvert's amendments left us open to being able to insert it at a given time. And I really want to go through the process so that we understand where we're at and then really engage the community. I do believe, yeah, we need to get the community to understand what's going on when they come in at the right time.
Thank you for that.
I will happily foreshadow the the original amendment.
Cool. Thank you for that. Councillor O'Neill, you're happy, do you want to say anything in just seconding that foreshadowed amendment?
Yeah, too happy to second the foreshadowed amendment. Can I just clarify that if this one fails, that's when we will move to that second vote? We're not reverting back to
We will just, we will just get reminded of the the process in just a moment. What I'll do is I'll go to councillor Calvert's right of reply and then we'll, then we'll just make sure we sort the process into the right order.
Okay, we see them both. So we're aware of what
Yes, we will. And then we'll put the two of them up together against each other. So people can have a moment, have a quick look. Councillor Calvert, write a reply.
Thank you. Look, and I appreciate some concerns about expressed about going with something that's quite explicit, because this is what my amendments are. And it's been quite clear that, you know, we do expect the, for us to consult with the community. If you look at this, the suggested changes from officers, they certainly weaken that down. Because they're, again, they're going, standing behind any legislative reforms that come from government. And I really just do not want to suggest to government that that's okay, not to consult properly, because that's effectively what that, the changes to the second bullet point are. I think we need to have an opportunity to have open dialogue. And I absolutely agree. We, I can't remember who mentioned about overt racism. And I think it's really important to get this information out there so that people can actually engage, not just with council, but with each other, with all the information on the table. Yes, we, sometimes our democracy and processes could be better, but that's the nature we're in. And it doesn't matter whether it's local government, whether it's Ewi matters, whether it's or central government, there are always ways in which we can do better. So, look, this is about being quite clear that we will be going out to our communities and just And just like, it's, we're not the only council doing this. I mean, we saw an amendment passed by Christchurch City Council recently. And we know other councils have also been quite clear that they do expect to go out and consult with their community. So this is just being clear about that and not, not trying to soften it. And, and well, I think just sort of follow the government's lead. We need to take the lead in this on behalf of the people of Wellington. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Calvert. So Heidi, can you pop up both of the amendments, please, and just remind us which order we do them in?
So here are both of the amendments. We need to vote on councillor Calvert and Pennett's amendments first. And only if those amendments fail will we vote on councillor Thun and O'Neill's foreshadowed amendment.
Okay, thank you. So if you take just a moment, have a quick look at them again.
Can I, can I just say there's some stuff there in red that is actually not red, it's just, it's just actually
That looks, that is true.
Amendment, which not, which doesn't reflect correctly.
That's probably true. Heidi, can you, if you can just go through and just do a quick correction of that, it'd be helpful.
First line seems to be the same as Diane's one.
Yes, that's correct. So councillor Thun and O'Neill's foreshadowed amendment is the, is councillor Calvert's amendment with officer advice.
Yeah, no, no, I think, I think she's just saying, Heidi, that the first line is actually the same, or the same part of it.
Can you just show me where?
The first line of seventeen, understanding community views prior to, or understanding.
Community views.
It's pretty much, anyway, I think people could read them and decide what they prefer.
So Heidi, on, under councillor Thun number seventeen, the first line, where in red it's got the council seeking understanding of the community's views, that is, that up to community views, that should be in black because that is actually the same, exactly the same as.
That's fine. It's just that bit, I think. Okay, councillors, you've got enough, had enough time to have a wee look, see? So we'll take, the first vote will be on councillor Calvert and Pennett's amendment. And then should that fail, then we move to councillor Thun and O'Neill's foreshadowed amendment. Okay?
And can we just confirm, are we taking these separately or together?
They look as though they're together.
We have them separately.
Or you want them, no, you want seventeen and eighteen separately? Sarah?
I think I do.
You do? Okay. We will take, so seventeen first.
There's waiting on votes from councillor Pennett and Fitzsimons.
Sorry, I'm, I'm on twice. Sorry, I've just got a bit of a technical difficulty, but I'm a no.
Provided you don't vote twice councillor Fitzsimons, I'm happy.
I promise I won't.
Okay, are we there, Heidi?
Yes, so that has failed with eight votes against and seven votes in favour. Those in favour were councillor Rush, Free, Calvert, Pennett, Sparrow, Young and Wolf.
Okay, right, eighteen.
Waiting on a vote from councillor Spirit, never mind. So that has also failed, nine votes against and six votes in favour. Those in favour were councillor Rush, councillor Calvert, councillor Pennett, Sparrow, Young and Wolf.
Thank you. Okay, and then we'll move to the alternative version, which should also be seventeen and eighteens. Okay. Now, do people want to take those two separately or together?
Don't we need to have a debate? Like, it's a new motion, isn't it, Heidi?
No, no, it's foreshadowed.
We can do debate on the foreshadowed amendment.
But we don't have to, and I'm not going to.
What?
We don't, but half of you have already said which one you wanted anyway. It's a foreshadowed amendment.
Alternative.
Yeah.
So in standing orders, it does say that once the initial amendment under discussion has been resolved, the chairperson may invite the member with the foreshadowed amendment to move it, which would then indicate that debate would occur.
Well, that's already, that's already happened.
But you don't debate, there's been no discussion about the foreshadowed amendment. Like, that's the whole purpose of a foreshadow, is you don't say what it is.
Yeah, you're actually, understanding orders, you're not allowed to discuss the foreshadowed amendment during the earlier debate, so.
Need to do some training.
We technically haven't just debated it, so.
We changed that, but didn't we?
You don't have to invite.
No, we haven't.
Heidi, can you just, can you just?
My advice would be that debate should occur, yes.
Okay, right, well, in that case we'll do that. So it's been moved because councillor, councillor Thun has already moved it. Councillor O'Neill, you didn't want to say anything extra, did you?
I'm happy to say things now, but I.
Sorry, point of order.
Foreshadowed amendment has been.
Point of order, I don't think you were correctly following standing orders. Can we get some more advice from Heidi?
Yeah, you may be correct. And my difficulty is I was actually looking for the standing orders while we were having a quick debate, but I've got no idea where, oh, there they are, right.
Laurie spoke to the, spoke to the previous amendment. She has not yet moved this amendment. So she actually needs to move this amendment. And I would also like understanding.
That's what I asked her to do, so.
When she moves the amendment, when she moves the amendment, you also need to speak to the substantive because this will be your only chance to speak to the substantive. So I wanted to make sure you were aware of that before you speak to move this amendment.
Heidi, can you just confirm that's correct? And I was just looking for these standing.
That is correct.
Right, cool. Thank you. What's the standing, what's the relevant standing order, please?
So foreshadowed amendments is twenty-one point eleven. So because the original motion by councillor Calvert and Pennett failed, this just becomes another amendment. So it was foreshadowed in the previous debate. Now that, that councillor Calvert-Pennett amendment has failed, this is now the amendment on the table. So this is the opportunity for councillor Thun and councillor O'Neill to speak to the substantive and their amendment.
Yeah, so it says that the chairperson may invite the member with the foreshadowed amendment to move the amendment. But if I don't do that, I'm just, I'm just conscious of that we've got a lot to get through, guys. So please keep this one really tight. Okay, right, where you go. Councillor Thun.
Okay, so I am pleased to bring this foreshadowed amendment. I think it's really important to, that we take our officers' advice in this case. And as I outlined before, I think we need to go through the process and be doing things at the right time. We don't want to do it at the wrong time and then end up having to redo it later or have the government come on top of us and say, now we're going to do a nationwide one. So to me, that, that, thank you councillor Pennett and Calvert for bringing the amendment. So just regarding the substantives, I just want to thank everyone that's been involved. I, I won't deny this one has been really hard for me personally. It's really hard to understand what the best way forward is for Wellington and for its people and for people in the future. But I really want to thank Liz from Ngati Tua for giving us that perspective yesterday. That was really helpful. Our environment is critical and just seeing what is going on has been heartbreaking. And just recently being an alternate on the Porirua, our now joint committee out there, it's, it's pretty devastating what the people of Porirua are having to go through and will be going through for a very long time. And this is just not sustainable. So what we need to acknowledge is that we need change, that we do need to go forward. And I'm, I'm excited to see that there is conversations about how we do that. But I think, I know I've said this before, and thank you councillor Conde for bringing this amendment as part of yours, but the, the opportunities in our circular system are great and we do need to pursue that. And I just, I, I worry about how we're going to get those solutions in the current model. And other cities are really doing great things on how they're minimizing their water. One thing is we cannot use the resource like we're using it. And just, you, we need to use it better. So I'm pleased to see that so many of our buildings now are having grey water. And to me, that just should be mandatory for flushing our toilets. We can't flush our good water away. It's just not sustainable, especially when we've got growth. And we can see that Wellington Water are already advising us that we need to start our water restrictions earlier. So that is a sign that we cannot go on with the method we've got at the moment. One thing I do want to say that is becoming quite important to me, while we are rattling around in the conversation about local government, we have a lot of employees between Wellington Water and Wellington City. And this also conversation is hard for them and they can't have the voice in this situation. So I really want to be mindful that when we speak about this, that we've got the interests of our team at Wellington Water and at Wellington City Council at the best, at the, at the heart of this. So it's really, it's hard when all the shakiness is going on, but it has a ripple effect through the organisation. So please, can we be mindful of that? And just thank you, everyone. I, I love the collaborativeness of this, that this is bringing, although it's painful. Look at all the conversations that are going on. So I thank everyone who are participating in that. But yes, I would really like to see some stronger leadership. I feel like that is why I, I, I am feeling not as cohesive on what's going on here because we really need that sense of holding us as we go along. So I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Thun. It was interesting, I just had a quick flick back while you were speaking at the, both the last two sets of of standing orders. We did actually make a tweak and it's actually less clear than it used to be, but anyway. So yeah. Councillor, councillor O'Neill, do you wish to, to speak to the, to the, to just to the amendment? And I'm going to encourage people, please, not to go on a great length on this one so we can get on back to the substantive and into the other matters we've got.
And excuse me, through you, Mayor Foster, I've just got an officer with me who would like to provide a little bit of advice on this amendment.
Kia ora councillors, it's Beth here, the general counsel. Look, just on reading the amendment we put up for seventeen, I just wanted to clarify that we think it should actually say that the decision will be whether to opt out of the reform, not into the reform, just to be completely accurate there. So if you're comfortable councillor Thun, then we will amend that to out of.
I think that's a statement of reality of the proposition.
Yeah, exactly. I just want to be absolutely clear.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Beth. That's really important.
Thank you. Okay, they were officers' words, I was going to correct those two. Councillor O'Neill.
Thank you, Chair. Can I just clarify, am I able to speak to the substantive at the same time? And I promise I won't talk.
Let's just deal with the amendment because you don't have this obligation.
Right, because I thought.
Through you, Mayor Foster.
I think you do actually, yeah.
Yes, councillor, councillor O'Neill must speak to the substantive at this point.
Yep, sorry, you do. Away you go.
That's right, standing orders, it's quite confusing, can't remember.
We've again taken that one backwards and forwards a couple of times.
Yep, thank you. So yeah, I'm, I'm happy to support this amendment with officers amendments to the amendment that was brought by Pennett and Calvert. I think it's really important that, given such a high level of interest and such a sensitive topic, that we do consultation once and we do it properly and we do it, you know, hopefully in tandem with other authorities in the region, rather than posting our own beliefs. And then it kind of, you know, it overlaps who's got the priority in consultation. This is the, this is the story of many broken pipes, broken wares, smelly dogs when you bring them back from Laual Bay Beach and poo water slides down Courtney Place. And I don't think it's any surprise to many of the elected representatives, either looking into Wellington or experiencing it in their own backyard, that Wellington has had a crisis. And I'd like to take this time to acknowledge councillor Rush because he did pretty much have a baptism of fire putting his hand up for the Three Waters support through council. And I don't think you've been acknowledged yet, but I just want to reiterate how responsive you've been and how on the ball you've been, as well as everybody else's involvement in the Faitoa Board and the Three Waters Reform and the other Pukarau that councillor Day have also brought with Liz Kelly. I, I think that, yeah, throughout this discussion, it's been quite an interesting one. We've obviously been bombarded with very well organised campaigns from the TPU. I'm putting my ears to other territorial authorities. Their emails have ranged up into the hundreds, Porirua's in the eighties. So I'm sure we're looking forward to a greater, robust debate there. But I think, yeah, at the end of the day, the more we try and pull this back to our control over water and why within our boundaries, the less we kind of lose sight of the purpose of having sustainable why in water for the rest of the region. And I like to think about our neighbours and Titahie Bay and other people still continuing to struggle on from that. I think, you know, there's a lot of mahi to do. There's not really, I don't see sense in amendments that kind of pull it back to councils and add extra steps to delay. We're all very familiar with the, what little you can do in just one term. And so that's why I'm supportive of any amendments that speed up rather than the tory, the mahi that needs to be done. Kia ora, and yeah, that's me.
Thanks councillor O'Neill. So on the amendment only, otherwise we'll take that to vote. Cool. Okay, councillor Thun, do you wish to reply to your second?
Just to acknowledge councillor Rush also for the work that he's been doing in the space, much appreciated over the years.
Yeah, and look, I was going to deal with that and write a reply, but thank you, I will endorse that too. Thank you councillor Rush. Okay, right, well, we will vote on this. Do people want to take that sep, those two separately or together? I'm seeing together. Okay, right.
Oh, fine, thank you.
Okay, voting on both of them together?
That has carried unanimously.
Brilliant, thank you. Good work. That's, that's a good, good, nice, clear one. Okay, councillors, that takes us back to the substantive. Those of you who still can speak on the substantive, if you want to do that. I'm not encouraging you.
Can I just ask, we're quarter to one or ten to one, are we breaking soon or is it just going to?
Well, if we can nail this one, at least we get this one out of the way. I'd rather have this one gone before, before lunchtime will be helpful. Gone before lunchtime. What was that about? I can't remember. So, does anybody else wishes to speak on the substantive? I see nobody. Cool, that is great. So councillors, I'm going to just pick up a few things and write a reply and then we can go and have some lunch.
So I reserve my right.
Oh, sorry. Oh, you did, councillor Rush, okay.
If I, if I may take the opportunity, thank you very much.
Of course you may.
Thank you councillors. As I have intimated throughout the debate, it seems that we've had this strange polarisation going on. We don't have a decision to make today. We don't have to say we love this, the government's proposal. What we are asked to do is to, is to show willingness to, to engage and to hopefully, you know, be constructive and help move things forward. We do know that a lot of our colleagues around the country are nervous, are making, I think, premature statements about the, about the process. I also think though that there's a genuine desire from government, DIA as well and the minister to listen, to understand about how we can make this process work and bring as many people as in councils along as we can. And councillor O'Neill, I totally understand what you mean when you say we need to speed this thing up. But I think it does sort of go against what you were talking about, the staff, the employees. And if we don't get this right, we're going to have some problems. And just so you know, on first of July, after the announcements, I sent an email to CEO and the Chair of Wellington Water asking about the staff, asking about their anxiety, what we can do to help. I think speeding along a process that sort of lumps everything into sort of one sort of group without a real roadmap about how that will affect the, the transition. And ideally, how we can steer that transition, I think is, is actually not going to be helpful to anyone and is actually going to work against the successful outcome that we want. So I'm not going to talk too much more about the amendments that revolve around the Murrell Task Force. I just feel that we went through a really good overdue and necessary process with high, you know, with very good specialists, which gave us an outcome. And I don't see that those key messages have been delivered to, to the minister in a form that says, this is what Wellington Council know, this is the process we've been through, this is how we think your, your process and your proposal works. And here's how we think that there's probably some barriers and the local voice is the clear and obvious one. And I have highlighted those as well. But, you know, from the outset, I was all for the aggregated model. I've peered back my enthusiasm now, I've seen just how power creative it is and how it, it doesn't really bind the community's interest that I was sort of looking for. But I do think there is a way forward now. I'll go to the, the structure chart. Look, it's just a, a blue sky thinking, but no one else has gone to the government and said, well, we think there's an alternative way forward. So that was just an opportunity for. we think there's an alternative way forward. So that was just an opportunity for us to take leadership and say, look, you know, we've looked at what you want to do. We think we can achieve it in a way which will actually bring the Hawksbays, uh, the Kapiti Coast, uh, the Nelsons and so forth along with us. Because what it does do is does bring that scale. It does bring the scale in a fairly standard, uh, business model with a parent company and subsidiaries that are dealing with regional, uh, aspirations of their customers or their residents. Um, this is not an unusual model. It's pretty standard. And it does allow us then to, um, to, to, to cascade up, uh, the desires and the aspirations of the community. So it, it's not a Sean Rush model. It's just stuff that I've been thinking about for over a year about how affiliated companies might work together. And then when I started hearing the concerns from other, uh, mirrors about a local voice, I just kind of figured, well, could we do this? Now, as I say, it's just an idea, you know, but it's a starting point. I just want to show that we are, we in Wellington are not walking away from this. We are constructive. We've got good ideas. We've got the task force, um, you know, data that can help steer this process. So I really do, um, urge you to support all, all the amendments, including, uh, the proposal that I set out as a, as a straw person, uh, to have a conversation about.
Councillor Rush, thank you very much.
Um, Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor, I just wondered whether, um, you could look at breaking for lunch while officers pull together all the amendments or resolutions which they could then send to us. And then we can, when we come back, we can decide which ones we want to be taken in bulk and which ones we may want to be taken separately.
Uh, probably I'm going to just ask, Heidi, are you comfortable doing that?
Yes, that's no problem.
Okay, so, um, what I'll do, uh, I will, um, what we'll do is break, is break for lunch and then I will do the writer reply and then we'll go straight to vote.
If it's the same with everybody else, I appreciate a shorter lunch break.
So yeah, sorry. Um, yeah, now let's just check that deputy mayor. How, um, how, how does that work for you time wise? I don't want to.
I have appointment at, at around half past one.
Andy, without interjecting, I'm fine just for a faripaku break.
Yeah, look, can we, can we just take five minutes then, rather than the lunch? We'll take five minutes for officers to compile them, send the, um, through. Uh, and then we can vote on them. Uh, well, I'll do the writer reply. We can vote on them and then we'll go to lunch. Okay? Cool. Okay. Heidi, are you okay with that?
Yep.
Thank you. So you'll email us all with the, um, with the recommendation or the, the, as we've got them. Um, and then, um, uh, we can print them out if we wish to print them out and you'll be able to screen share them as well.
Yep, coming your way shortly.
Right, well, we will start again. Uh, it's twelve fifty-five. We'll start again at one o'clock. Are we all back?
Everyone on the Crescent and Rose Needers back.
That's excellent.
Everyone who's, yes.
Right.
Alan Bay's here.
Alan Bay's there. This is a great way of doing it. Alan Bay's here. It's Corory here. It's Candala there.
Katay Keburni.
It's, it's Corory and Candala. I can't see the faces yet.
They're always late. The two Ks.
South Poi Rua.
There's lots of Ks in Coro- in, in, in Wellington. Yeah.
Nios here.
Yeah. Your, your Nios there. That's excellent. Very good. Right. Are we, uh, back on there, Heidi? I can see Candala's back now. And, and Corory as well. Very good. Okay. Look, um, thank you, uh, all councillors, uh, for what I think has been a very, uh, constructive and collaborative debate. And I congratulate you all, uh, for that. Um, I'm going to just pick up some of the things which are highlighted from the various different contributions that have been made, just in terms of, um, of writer reply. Um, the first one of them, uh, just reflecting on what Liz Kelly, uh, said, um, not supporting the notion that uh, assets belong to councils, it's owned by the people. And look, I agree with that. I think all the assets that councils own in law are owned on behalf of the people they serve. I guess the area I have some, uh, greater difficulty with what, um, it is, is that ownership remains meaningful. And that's, that's a bit of a challenge, I think, still with the model which, uh, the government's got as it's proposed, uh, which, uh, you've got ownership in, in some sort of way, but not in, not in terms of actually being able to influence. It's a bit like saying I own the house, but I can't do, I can't do, describe, d- decide when it's going to be redecorated, who's going to occupy it or whatever else. Um, councillor Conde, um, points you made there, um, the complexities around three and four, and you said you might vote against those. Um, those were things which are taken largely from the Meral Task Force report. And I think what councillor Rush has certainly tried to do is to make sure that we highlight for the minister those issues which were in the Meral Task Force report. Because I think they are very valuable. And that certainly was the bit which, although it was confronting, was the reason that I supported councillor Day's amendment, uh, in respect of the Mana Fenua. But because that came again straight from the Task Force report. So it comes, if it's in the Task Force report, I'm going to support it because we all supported that. Um, uh, you also made the comment that the Meral Task Force didn't hedge over reforms. Just said if, if the reforms failed, we do our own thing. The wording in the Task Force reports, as I read it, just says one or two, but it doesn't say one comes before the other. Although I guess you could probably uh, interpret that if, um, you know, if the government was going to get in a reform process and that carried through, it would clearly be the one that was first. But if it didn't, uh, then it will be the, the Wellington Water model. We, but as a task force, we just said one or the other. But what we did recognise is there was a need for change and there was a need for, uh, whichever entity it was to be the asset owning entity. Um, you also may comment around reforms being, uh, and the efficiencies around forty-five percent. Look, I, I think everybody is finding those efficiency gains very troubling, um, and saying that they don't believe them. Uh, but also that there is no efficiency gain being recognised as the counterfactual being possible where that's a smaller entity. And it's not as though, you know, if there's one big entity C, that it gets a forty-five percent, um, efficiency gain. And if this entity C one was and C two, which is what councillor Rush and some of the other councils actually, the Hawksbey councils are suggesting, uh, that there will be no efficiency gain. Clearly that's, um, ridiculous. There, if this is a continuum that essentially the government are suggesting bigger is better. If efficiency was the key thing, you go for one for the whole country. Uh, they haven't decided to do that. Um, but it's, there will be a, there'll be a gradation there and there'll be many other things other than just size which delivers efficiency. You also may comment around the balance sheet separation. I think the other bit which is key there is with what the government decides to do in terms of standing behind any entities going forward. Uh, and you also said that the local voice doesn't have to come through council. Yes, um, and I probably would reflect that when local voices come to us as a council, when sometimes we agree with them and sometimes we don't, you know, maybe that's a challenge that was. Uh, councillor Fitzsimons, uh, you said, uh, you commented on the Havlot North. Havlot was very different to us. I mean, Havlot was about poor water as far as I can, um, understand being, getting contaminated. Um, whereas ours, uh, I think councillor Day picked up that the biggest challenge we've got isn't so much, uh, the, the main system, because the main system is shot through with lots of safeguards and we've got to just keep on making sure those safeguards are, are maintained. You know, if, if you drop this below, for example, a certain level of chlorination, um, then the, the water system in that particular area shuts off. So the protection's there. The biggest risk, I think councillor Day quite rightly pointed out, is actually in the aquifer. And it's not so much E coli getting in there. It's, um, it's other things like hydrocarbons or, um, chemicals getting in from the urban area above it is the biggest risk as, as far as I understand it from the conversation I had with, uh, with Wellington Water. Um, I thought you were pretty challenging and confronting on the no moral authority councillor Fitzsimons. I know you've been reasonably consistent on that. Um, but I, I, I would reflect, um, particularly councillor Rush's comments on that. And, and I think councillor, um, councillor Thunes about the staff who go to work and work really, really hard and really professionally to try and make sure that we have a good safe water system. Sometimes we might not give them the resources that they need. Uh, but you know, I've been down, I've been down there on site talking with, uh, staff on many occasions. You know, and sometimes like, for example, when we had the, uh, the Willis Street outage, they were there working twenty-four, seven, uh, for a number of days. You know, it was, it was twelve hours on, twelve hours off. To the extent that the staff had to get driven home by somebody else to keep them safe and getting from A to B. They worked blimmin' hard. They, you know, they are up to their elbows literally in it sometimes. Uh, and it's a challenge. And they, they said to me, that's actually a challenge getting more people to work in that, that industry. And of course, this, this reform is predicated on a lot of more, a lot more people getting into that industry. And it's not exactly glamorous at times. And so, um, you know, I think we've got to stand behind the team who actually do a fantastic job. And, and they've, you know, sometimes we get communications from Wellington Water about some of the things and the complexities they've got to work with. Um, and it's, it's not an easy job. And I think we just need to respect, they do sometimes a very difficult job.
Point of order, Andy. Point of order, Mayor Foster.
Point of order.
So it's just about most representation.
Oh, yes. And the misrepresentation you are suggesting is.
Um, it's just that you were sort of implying that councillor Fitzsimons was saying that the staff don't do the right thing. And that was not what she was talking about with having, um, the, the public confidence and decision making. Quite a different, different conversation. I just want to make sure because she wouldn't want to be, I'm sure, thumbs up, she wouldn't want people to think that's what she's saying.
I, I'm tempted to rule in your favour against myself councillor Dave. Uh, but the, the point, the point I'm making is that sometimes the staff are collateral damage in, and I've seen this recently. Um, in fact, I've been taking the task over this with, you know, some of the stuff around, around parking. So, you know, sometimes the staff are collateral damage for our, our company. Uh, and I just wanted to make sure that we're just careful about that. Um. Councillor Pannett, you made quite a few, uh, comments which I've got to say I agree with around, you know, the, the whole thing around there is no alternative in the democracy around this and the centralisation around this. I think that is a widespread concern. Uh, and I, I agree with you. And that's why I think it's, it's good for us to keep on in the conversation with government. But say these things about local influence, um, are really, really important to us. They're not just things which should be brushed aside in a one size fits all, um, government most best approach. Um. Councillor, I'll go to councillor, um, Calvert, uh, just to say, um, you said you would, uh, vote against, I think you'd vote against six A and B. Um, I think six A, if I can just say, I just want to again say congratulations to councillor Rush for doing, doing a little bit of thinking there, but also the conversations he's had particularly with the Hawksbey councils, which indicate that there is a desire within entity C to be able to look at an alternative model. And I think it's good for us. This doesn't mean it's got to be all worked up and all, you know, all bells and whistles. But it's a good thing for us actually to say to government, think about something else. And I think that's the value of six A. Uh, with six B, it's really saying, if we don't say something like that, um, councillor Calvert, then we're not communicating at all. And I think every other council in the country is going to be communicating. If we didn't, this is the capital city, it'd be a rather odd position to take. Um, but I do say thank you for bringing up the issue around public engagement. Um, I know we've changed the wording around that, but we got to a wording that officers are comfortable with. So thanks councillor Thune and, um, O'Neill for raising, uh, that as well. Uh, and, um, i- in that I wanted just to say, um, councillor Rush, you raised that you were concerned about that the government wouldn't run a, an engagement process and that it might go straight to legislation and the only engagement being through, uh, through a select committee process. I think with something of this scale, uh, that would be profoundly, uh, I would say anti-democratic, uh, that we're real concerned. And I think it's really important that we as a council, and that's one we did vote unanimously on, say that we want a proper engagement process. And I think that possibly reflects, if, um, if people are against it for whatever the reasons are, it possibly reflects, maybe it hasn't been a crash hot job that's been done, because this is government's proposal in trying to explain it. Uh, I think most people would recognise that the, um, the advertising campaign that government has run has been woeful. They've been asked frequently to take it down and to replace it. They haven't done so. So I, I don't think they've put themselves in a good place for that. Uh, and just to finish off, um, I want to reiterate the, the recognition of councillor Rush having done a great job, uh, on this, but also on, on a number of other things as well with respect to infrastructure. So I appreciate the work that you've done there. And I think you're absolutely right in the comment you made. It's important that we reflect the key principles, key messages that were in the task force work back to the government. And I think that's what you've tried to do with the, um, with the re- um, amendment we've got there. The final one I wanted to make up, uh, wanted to mention was just in terms of other ideas, one other one that's been coming, uh, been sort of uh, thrown around a little bit, which I think is worth having a look at, is gaining some of the efficiencies. I mean, there's the borrowing issue, which, um, has been raised as a scale issue and the balance sheet separation. But there's also the issue of potentially getting scale benefits from essentially, it's almost the Ministry of Works approach of saying, you know, you could have a very large scale, if you like, entity to do delivery. Because what we know is Wellington Water is not just, it's not a delivery agency as much as doing the planning, the design, the, you know, that sort of thing. We're, and it, it contracts a lot of the delivery out. Uh, so if you said you could gain a lot of efficiencies from having one large delivery agency or a couple of large delivery agencies for competition, if you like, across the country as a whole. So there are different ways of, of achieving some of these, uh, these objectives. So councillors, thank you for the debate again. Um, and what will go is to the, to the debate, uh, to the debate to vote. Um, now my question is, what I'm going to do is ask if anybody wants to take any of them separately so that we can isolate the separate ones. And if we end up with all of them being taken separately, then we'll do all of them separately. Councillor Conde, I've got your hand up. Which one?
Thank you. I'd like to take four, six A, six B and six C separately, please.
Okay, right. Does anybody else want to take anything else separately?
Um, I do.
Who's the I? Where's that?
Also Diane here. So I have just.
Yes, thank you.
Um, I'd like to take, um, eight and nine. And, um, thirteen through to sixteen.
And thirty.
But you can take, but I'm happy for them to be taken.
Thirteen, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen as one together.
Yeah, I'm happy for that.
Okay, right, okay, cool.
Um, two A, I'd like taken separately.
I'm getting down to pretty much, we're going to take a lot soon.
It might be easier to be honest, Andy, there's so many there.
Look, I think we will. I think we, we, we're getting so many of them that we'll take them separately. Right. Okay, right. So all got your voting buttons? We'll start off with the easy one, receiving the information.
Just one, I might prioritise, given the mayor's deputy mayor needs to go in fifteen, Andy, that's all.
Uh, we'll, we'll just keep on rocking, rocking through them if we can. I think we'll get thirteen, sixteen all in one hit, I hope. Right, let's go.
Writing on votes from councillor Fitzsimons and councillor Calvert. That's carried unanimously.
Thank you. Two?
Uh, two has carried unanimously.
Thank you. Uh, three?
Two A?
Two A.
Oh, sorry, two A. Sorry, jumped over one. This, this small bit on the screen. Right, okay. Councillor Calvert, you've got a hand up rather than the vote.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Two A has carried, thirteen in favour, two against, councillor Pannett and councillor Young against.
Okay, thank you. Okay, three?
Can you just pull it up on the screen a little bit? That would help just so we can see. Lovely. Thank you so much.
Ah, yes, I took the opportunity to take, to go and, um, print them all off. So it's much easier to, to share it that way.
And I thought I was bad on amendments.
You are.
This doesn't excuse you councillor.
Writing on councillor Pannett. Three has carried unanimously.
Uh, can you just move it up please so we can read it?
Four has carried, nine votes in favour, six against with councillor Fitzsimons, Conde, Day, Matthews, Paul and O'Neill against.
Thank you. Five. Oh, sorry, four A. I imagine that would be easy. Uh, okay.
Four A has carried unanimously.
Two, five?
Five has carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Six. Got everybody there?
Six has carried unanimously.
Thank you. Six A.
Waiting on votes from councillor Wolf. Oh, there we go. Uh, so that has carried eight votes in favour, seven against, with councillor Calvert, Fitzsimons, Condi, Day, Matthews, Paul and O'Neill against.
Thank you. Uh, takes us to the next one. Uh, six B.
Six B has carried eight votes in favour, seven against, with councillor Fitzsimons, Condi, Day, Thun, Matthews, Paul and O'Neill against.
Okay, thank you. Uh, six C.
Six C has carried nine votes in favour, six against, with councillor Fitzsimons, Condi, Day, Matthews, Paul and O'Neill against.
Okay, thank you. Uh, seven.
Seven has carried unanimously.
Eight.
Waiting on councillor Day, councillor Sparrow. Uh, eight has failed with six votes in favour and nine votes against. Those in favour were councillor Fitzsimons, Condi, Day, Matthews, Rush and O'Neill.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, nine.
Nine has carried with eight votes in favour, seven against. Those against were deputy mayor Free, councillor Calvert, councillor Pannett, Thun, Young, Rush and Wolf.
Thank you. Uh, ten.
Ten has carried fourteen votes in favour, one against, uh, the one against being councillor Pannett.
Thank you. Uh, now, did I take people want to take thirteen to sixteen in one head?
I'm happy to.
Okay, thirteen to sixteen in one head. That was the one I was asked to do collectively.
As long as we can see them all at the same time, sorry, there's just so many. Yeah.
Yeah, actually, they are quite long, so. Although, actually, I noted that they were split, uh, I think. You still happy to take them all together?
No, sorry, I'd like to.
Okay, right, we'll do them individually. Okay, thirteen.
Uh, thirteen has carried twelve votes in favour, three against. Those against were councillor Calvert, Young and Wolf.
Thank you. Fourteen.
Waiting on votes from councillor Sparrow and Young.
Reading it.
Fourteen has carried eleven in favour, four against, councillor Calvert, Young, Rush and Wolf against.
Two, fifteen.
Fifteen has carried eleven in favour, four against. Those against were councillors Calvert, Sparrow, Young and Wolf.
Okay, thank you. And lucky last.
So is this eighteen that you're?
Six, six. Oh, no, it's not, sorry, sixteen. My fault. I should have turned, I should have turned the page one more. There's more to go. Yeah.
Uh, sixteen has carried, ten votes in favour, five against. Those against were councillors Calvert, Pannett, Young, Rush and Wolf.
Thank you. Uh, seventeen.
That's waiting on councillor Young and councillor Rush. Seventeen has carried unanimously.
And now lucky last, eighteen.
Eighteen has carried unanimously.
Okay, councillors, thank you. Um, well done, everyone, and a very welcome um and collaborative discussion. So I congratulate you all on that. And as a reward, uh, shall we come back at two o'clock on the dot? That gives us thirty five minutes. Happy with that? Cool. Okay, done. Um, and deputy mayor, um, thank you very much and um, well, uh, if you can leave us to it, that's absolutely fine. All the best for.
Good luck with the meeting.
All the best for the reason of that.
Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you, thanks, Sarah.
Little potatoes. Not really.
Uh, ready to go again.
We're live now.
Okay, so we've got everybody there. Go do the, the geography and make sure everybody is actually there. I can see Island Bay is there. I can see Rosney is there. I can see Towers, at least Planet Tower's got to be represented three times, so. I can see two towers. Three. Mount Victoria, I see partially represented there.
Now, bit one, calling Mount Vic two.
Calling, calling the rest of Mount Vic.
Lower Mount Vic or higher or east or west?
I think it's north, north and south, isn't it, Nicola?
No, it's north and south, yeah.
Okay, cool. Look, I think we will, um, we're at two I one, so we see we start at two, so we'll, we'll get underway again. Um, officers, uh, who is going to introduce for us the uh, the Waikatahi um paper?
Chair, Andy, it's uh, or mayor, I should say, if it's Brad, Brad Singh.
Cool. Hi, Brad. Is there anything briefly you want to say? And if, if everybody else can turn their mics off wherever they are, would be helpful. Cool, right. I think I've already got a question there. So let's start with Brad. Um, where you go? If there's anything you want to say, papers, paper could, we could take us read, but if there's anything we want to highlight.
Uh, chair or councillors, um, it's uh, become a little bit clear to me that leader's the one that gets to present uh, the really cool, exciting things, whereas I tend to bring bad news.
Oh.
So on, on the seventh of uh, this month, uh, we heard back from Waikatahi with regards to our uh, proposed uh transport investment. Um, effectively what they've come back with is a shortfall of revenue of fourteen million dollars. Um, council officers haven't had a lot of time to digest what this would mean for the transport programme. But we've put together a recommendation which we felt that we needed to bring to councillors as soon as possible uh, so that you were aware of the situation that we were facing in terms of gross revenue. And that this would have an impact on the forecasted debt to revenue uh ratio in the L T P.
Cool, thank you. Right, I've got questions from councillors Day, Condi, Thun, and I might have one depending on what gets owing Pannett. I might have one, anyone fast, so council vote.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um, just to, just to say, Brad, appreciate the mahi you do and uh, obviously this is just part of it. But um, my, I've got a few part I. The first one is, um, has this happened to us before in um, in such a way that we've had to um look at changes like this?
Um, the, it, almost every time we go out for an L T P, there are elements of our transport programme that don't get funded. Um, and we need to pivot based on, on what happens. Last time out, we went out for the low cost, low risk uh, program. I think we were short by about four million dollars, but at that point, our low cost, low risk program was about uh, uh, I think it was around twenty five more. That was our program. This time round, it was fifty more.
Uh, was, is there, or has there been any negotiation with Waikatahi over this? Do you get the opportunity to go back and say, hey, can we, um, can we negotiate this?
Um, really difficult to do. Uh, once they've made their decision, they go through a moderation uh session where all the different investment advisors from across the country sit down and moderate the different asset management plans and look at where they're putting the investment. And then they effectively come up with a decision and communicate that decision back to us. We've had an opportunity to question them on some of those decisions, um, but they haven't been uh open to moving on those decisions.
Okay, um, and then just a couple of more specific ones around some of the different initiatives. Um, how new is the retaining wall funding? Has it been in for a long time or is it a new thing?
It's been in for a long time. Um, retaining walls haven't been completely excluded from the funding by Waikatahi. Normally what we do is we do strengthening work when a wall needs renewal. These two particular walls aren't up for renewal, so we had to put them into the improvements uh program. So retaining walls are still funded. We do have a lot of retaining walls that are funded, but that's through the renewals program. These two walls aren't up for renewals, so they, they fell into the not funded category.
So if they're not up for renewals, is that because they actually do need to be done?
Uh, they're not up for renewals because in terms of their condition, they're fine. But in terms of their earthquake strengthening status, they're not. And so we wanted to strengthen them because they're on a lifeline route.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. Um, I'm also, I'm locally, as you're aware, getting a lot of requests about school safety zones. And um, I know that there have been some from across other parts of the city. Um, are you able to say, are, are you seeing, obviously, I've sort of mainly got a view over the northern ward on that, but um, I, I do remember there was one in the central city um, where there had to be some traffic resolutions done. But what are we seeing around the rest of the city, around school zones?
Yeah, there are quite a few requests for uh, school safety initiatives. Um, the school, safer schools program that was put forward was uh, quite a significant uplift in terms of expenditure that was put forward for the safer schools program and that was a direct response to the request that we're getting.
Yeah, okay. And then one um question just um with regards to crash statistics. Um, so in our local community, um, the road between Tower and um Johnsonville, uh, a couple of years ago, it might be three years ago, there was quite a serious accident on there and they had to close the road. And um, it meant cyclists actually couldn't get home, so that affected quite a few people trying to get out of the city who lived anywhere north of um Glenside. And um, I'm just wondering with crash statistics whether it records the impact on other road users when something like that happens?
Uh, I don't believe it does. I don't believe it does. I believe that the Waikatahi uh crash analysis system doesn't record any flow on impacts to other uh road users based on a crash.
Okay, and then um, just the last question is, um, is there any impact of this on any of the Let's Get Wellington Moving um projects?
Um, this submission was purely based on our L T P and excluded Let's Get Wellington Moving.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Conde.
Excuse me, Brad. Um, first off, I, I don't know if Alison's available on the call, but I would really like some officer advice about the effect of these kind of deferrals and scaling back proposals on our climate goals. And then I've got some questions about cycleways.
If Alison's not online, I do have an email that she sent to me yesterday, which I can read out uh, talking to that. I can circulate it after this.
Yes, Alison is on leave today, Brad.
Um, I think it would be, I don't know, but everybody asked, but I would be keen to hear it before we make our decision rather than have it circulated afterwards.
Can you, can you send it through, Brad?
Yes, I'll send it through. Um, in the interim, I'll just read some of the key points.
Thank you.
She indicates that uh, because the bike network plan is largely unaffected, that's uh, that's reassuring. However, in the light of climate emergency, the advice of myself and my team is that we should be proceeding as fast as possible on all projects that support reducing carbon emissions and implementing the sustainable transport hierarchy. She goes on to say um, uh, that she cannot answer uh about the financial situation. But um, in terms of uh climate change, um, it's uh, she goes on to say that is uh the, the cost of climate change impacts is consistently modeled as higher than the cost of prevention.
I, I, I think just Brad, if I could, um, sorry, I wasn't aware this question was coming. I think Moana's online as well. I mean, that's, uh, there's a little bit of rats and mice in that comment, so I might um invite Moana or if she is online to um, to make a few comments.
I, yep, I'm here. Um, yeah, look, I, I think um, as per Alison's email, as much as you can do, as quick as you can do it, is, is the mantra for climate change. But I would point out that the real big game change for climate change is Let's Get Wellington Moving. Um, some of the stuff here, while it will be helpful, is a little bit more in the rats and mice territory when it comes to, to big impact. So um, as Brad said, this doesn't impact Let's Get Wellington Moving funding. We want to do as much as we can, but I wouldn't be too concerned. Uh, the big decisions you're about to make on I M A T are, are where the real game is in terms of climate change.
Uh, just, just to follow on in that comment uh from Moana. Um, in terms of the overall council transport program, this fourteen million dollars uh represents four percent of our program. Even if you're excluding Let's Get Wellington Moving. So of our total council program, this is four percent of our council program.
Okay, thank you. And then I, I just, I'm still trying to get my head around um, the, the effects of the option two proposal on the kind of what they're calling the transformational, the permanent cycleways upgrade program. So Brad, you sent me an email that said that um, that the years one and two funding will be the same, but year three funding is scaled back. Can you talk about um, how much it scaled back by? Why? And couldn't we just spend it on a different cycleway, I guess?
So the, the reason why we've done that is because the way Waikatahi indicated our funding levels is they've indicated certain things are out completely, certain things are in and they're funding it. And then there's two other categories which are probable and possible. Probable is fairly confident that we've got the funding for that. There's a business case process to go through and the funding will be released. Possible relies on funding being made free in the N L T F. So in, in the transformational program, there's a possible in there for some of these things. And so. And so it really depends on whether funding will be available in the NLTF over the next three years. So we've had to do, we're not hundred percent clear on the detail behind it in terms of how we would react to it. Officers are still working on that and we'd have to come back to you with a bit more detail on that.
Okay, I, I have just one more question, I guess, because there's, there's one specific one that I think Waikatahi came back and said, no, we're not going to fund it. And that's the Johnsonville Tower. Is the plan to essentially defer that and push it into our ears and ask again later? And then bring forward other, other cycleways instead?
The, the plan for Tower Johnsonville is to proceed with our transitional programme over this three-year period. And then through the three-year period leading up into the next LTP is to talk to Waikatahi and make the case for Tower Johnsonville.
Thank you Brad.
Thanks councillor Foon.
Kiora Brad, thank you. And yes, appreciate your, your mode here. I've got three questions and I think you may have hinted at it, but have we got any indication of what the price lines are in between each of these and option two, particularly around the deferred work?
Sorry councillor Foon, I didn't, I didn't quite get that one.
Just what are the price, what, what dollars have we got next to each of the three categories in the deferred work?
I can, I can let you know that. So currently safer to schools in the LTP was close to a million dollars over three years. We're now looking at about six hundred and seventy seven thousand over three years. Walking improvements was ten million dollars, up from around one million dollar a year. We're now looking at, the initial LTP was ten million dollars over three years. We're now looking at scaling that back to five million dollars. And the cycling minor works was around three million dollars and we're looking at about two point four million dollars. Build Back Better is probably the biggest cut that was sitting at twelve million dollars, although we, we didn't quite expect them to fund that anyway. And so we scaled that back to one million dollars, which is probably realistic, given the infancy of that programme.
What, what about the resilience, the LED and the laneway upgrades?
There is resilience projects where around ten, ten million dollars over three years. The LED was three point three million dollars over three years and the laneways was around one point three five.
Okay, and with the LED, that's, is that about safety or is it about replacement of the existing bulbs?
It's about safety. It's infills.
Great, thank you. And one more question. Are you, the deferrals that you've put forward, are you saying that officers are comfortable with these deferrals, particularly around resilience work?
Comfortable, yes, because we've got a lot of work that we've got in the resilience space under the renewals programme. So deferring it into year, years four and beyond, we feel gives us enough time to build a case to justify those two walls. It's two walls as opposed to probably about thirty or forty that we've got to do over the next three years anyway.
Okay, and one more question, just checking that Waikatahi were the decision makers on this cutback? And where they came in on the recommendations?
In some cases, yes. In some cases, officers have juggled things around to align with council priorities.
Okay, thank you.
Cool councillor Panet and then, and then Fitzsimons and then Calvert, then I'm going to close this one off.
Thank you. Liam, can I just confirm what impact did the climate team have on, on this paper?
Oh, look, without Alison's birthday today, so she's taken the day off, but I'm pretty sure she's been working very closely with Brad, he's probably more.
I just want to know, was the climate team inputting into this paper?
I believe they were, I only, yes.
This paper was co-authored by myself and Joe Hewitt. So he was resourcing from everyone under Liam's director and I was working with the infrastructure director to put this paper together.
Okay. And given I have a very low opinion of the transport agency, how much have they cut the riding budget by? If they're going to cut money for resilience and walking and cycling, what's your view overall?
As far as I'm, as far as I know, state highways are fully funded.
Yeah, so that does say something. And just my last question, Moana. Given information seems to be leaking about Let's Get Willie Moving all over the place, I see there's a nice map in the paper today. Can you confirm how many tunnels they are consulting on?
There'll be a range of options that will be brought to you at the end of October, beginning of November. I'm not in a position to tell you what is in all of them, but it is a range of options.
Because my concern is if we don't do our job here, we are relying on an agency that still is very concentrating on road building. So can you confirm to me that they will be making a serious commitment to change their usual way of operation?
I think Waikatahi have been working really constructively as part of the Let's Get Wellington Moving programme. You, you went through that objectives weighting workshop which made it quite clear with the forty percent weighting on carbon, how important climate change is to the programme and you would have seen from the presentation that we had on Tuesday that one of the main things that Willie was talking about in terms of the consultation was needing to be really clear that climate change is much more front and centre now than it was back when we did the original consultation as well as the urban development and housing stuff. So it is being taken very seriously and work on the climate impacts of the different options that will be brought to you is also being done.
Thanks. And Brad, just last question. I guess maybe a few of us have found this paper unclear in terms of its commitment to sustainable transport. So will you be making any communications to the cycling community about this paper? And the walking, I forgot, just be absolutely clear what it means.
We can do so, once councillor, council officers have worked their way through the detail, we can put something together.
Councillor Fitzsimons.
Yeah, thanks. I just want to check, Build Back Better includes making walking and cycling improvements while doing business as usual renewals work, doesn't it?
Yes, it does.
And just the other thing is, has there been emails with councillors on this paper sort of giving advice that we haven't all been CC'd into? And if there has been, can we just get those flicked around to us all? Cool, thank you.
Thank you. I'm not aware of any either for that one. Councillor Calvert.
Thank you. And Brad, if we were to delay making a decision on this for a month or two while we sort of took a helicopter view of the, all our capital expenditure covering of key infrastructure, would that be an issue for you and your team?
Not really. If, if we were to delay it by a month or two, we would be able to bring back a more holistic picture, I suppose, in terms of being able to discuss actual projects and actual activities. At this stage, it's still very high level.
Okay, thank you. And I, and you did note that you hadn't really had a lot of time to digest the information coming in to be able to provide this, this information and what on options, is that, is that right? Is that?
Well, we've had, we've had twenty-three days from the time that we heard the news to, to date. So yes, it hasn't been a lot of time. We've done the best in that time with the intention that we thought that was very important that you knew this news and what it potentially meant for our transport programme as quickly as we could.
Thank you.
Councillor Conde, back again.
Yes, thank you. Just, was just reminded by councillor Calvert's comment. Brad, can you give us just a reminder of, of what that paper is that's coming to the infrastructure committee shortly about the capacity constraints? And whether there's going to be any suggestion, whether officers are looking at any cuts to programmes due to capacity constraints in that paper?
So councillor, I'm holding a few on that one. It's really focused on three things. First of all is the state of the labour market. The second is the supply chain issues we're having at the moment. And thirdly, and most relevant to what you're asking is the impact, the potential impact of that on the long-term plan. The word cut doesn't really appear in our thinking about the word refacing is kind of more what we're thinking.
So I have three questions, Mike and Brad. The first one does go to that, it's just the issue of deliverability. I mean, if, if we put this in there, I mean, how, you're going to end up not delivering something anyway, aren't you? I guess the question is how much are you going likely to end up not delivering? Is this, how material is this?
Well, there will be any advice on, on, on the fourteenth of October, you wish, but this is, this is not hugely material in the context of anything else that we have going on. We're talking about a four hundred million dollar capital programme this year, actually.
Yes, yeah, okay, cool. So deliverability is a challenge anyway, you're clearly making that. So second issue is just the subsidy issue. So anything that we, if we would box on and say we want to do some of these things, we will pay a hundred percent, whereas if we were to wait for another crack it, then we might well get fifty-one percent.
That's correct.
Right, cool, thank you. And just as last one is the LED upgrades, three point three, which was around safety and sort of infills. To what, what degree does that relate to the Panku Promise? Of Courtney Place area?
Yeah, so our, our proposal, that's one place where we have extended our thinking, our proposal will still see us pursuing Tower, Murma and Courtney Place for the Panku Promise. But we would be deferring all other suburbs until year four.
Okay, cool. And the lane, and so the last, but the laneways, that's obviously one you're considering, you're contemplating saying, are you just holding horses on that a particular laneway?
At this stage, we're going to continue with the laneways that we've started.
Swan and Garrett.
Swan and Garrett. And I think there was one more and we're also continuing with Tower St. Upgrades. Yeah, Farmers, that's right.
Right. So what are you not considering, continuing with, I guess is then saying, hey, well, that can wait for?
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to bring that back.
Cool, cool. Okay, thank you. Right, councillors, that's the end of the question. So I'm looking for a councillor who wants to move the paper. Because otherwise I'll do it. So I can see stunning enthusiasm to do that. So I'll, I'll move it just very briefly. I think I'm, clearly overall, we've got a very substantial capital programme. I think we're going to be in a situation which it's, we, we know we never deliver everything anyway. In fact, there's a paper which got quite a bit of coverage that went to councillor Calvert's committee recently. The issue for me, and I know some desire to go, well, let's just box on and just throw, you know, put all the money in for everything, is that if we do that, then we are going to pay a hundred percent of whatever it is that we put in now. Whereas if we were a bit patient, maybe we get fifty-one percent out of, out of the transport system, which to me, I think it's, it's hard to justify not at least having a go at doing that, even if it requires us to be a bit patient about this. But which is what, about, what is it? Three percent of our entire capital budget, if that. And we're likely to end up underspending our capital budget probably about twenty, twenty-five percent on, on, on average anyway. So I'm comfortable with the advice we've got from staff, but I'm looking for hopefully a brief debate. First of all, I want a seconder. If I haven't got a seconder, then we, we can, we can just defer this one and go off to.
Andy, I'm happy to second.
Thank you councillor Young. Do you wish to speak?
Councillor Young, you were seconding my amendment, were you?
Oh God, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Just, you know.
Right. Okay, I'm still looking for, I'm still looking for a seconder. This is going once. I've got a second, I was just almost hoping that nobody would. That's okay councillor Rush, you've done it.
I was just trying to help out.
Thank you. Do you wish to speak?
No.
Okay, thank you. Okay, right.
I'll reserve my right.
Right, councillor Fitzsimons, I had you first up. Are there any amendments, I guess is my question.
Yes, that's what, that's what I've got.
So are there any others?
Yeah, there's some others.
Okay, so we've got two amendments there. Right, okay, councillor Fitzsimons, you're on.
Can I get my amendment up on the screen if that's okay? Great, thank you. So this amendment really is about giving councillors the opportunity to endorse option one in the paper. Because as far as I'm concerned, this is really a question about whether we're as good as our word when it comes to the climate emergency and our commitment to city safety. All of these were contained in the LTP, admittedly with different assumptions about how they're funded. But to me, they're not nice to haves, they're important parts of our future as a city. I think for people that are worried about the impact on the debt ceiling, I want to point out that we haven't borrowed to the full extent of our capital programme for many, many years and it's unlikely that we will this time either. But in any case, I think these are exactly the sort of projects we should be borrowing to invest in. Otherwise, we're going to end up having the same debate we've just had about water infrastructure, about our cycling network, about city safety, about resilience work like retaining walls. So to me, this is a very important decision. And I guess I don't want to make the point that the future won't thank us for scrimping and saving when it comes to important decisions like this. But also for me, there's a issue around the council's credibility. Just last week, we agreed to consult on a bike network. If we cut it back the very next week, we risk making exactly the same mistakes we made in Island Bay. The credibility of the council among residents on delivering bike infrastructure is already at rock bottom. And I just think flip-flopping like this will build mistrust among residents and lead to some of our people being really concerned and upset. And I appreciate that it's not the full bike network and it's not undermining the whole of it, but there are steps that take what we agreed last week backwards in this. So I strongly urge people to support this. The Build Back Better component as well is very important. I know councillor Conde convinced me of the importance of this. Basically what it means is that when you're making improvements, you do, you make improvements to walking and cycling as you are doing business as usual improvements around the city. So I'm really hopeful that we can just agree to commit to what we did in the LTP. It's, it's very critical to the future of our city that we do things like safe routes to school. That's probably the thing that I've had the most residents contact me about on a ward basis. They, many, many times concerned parents talked to me about the importance of safe routes to school. And I would hate to see us scaling back our investment in that area as is proposed. And I really want to echo the comments of Alison around climate change. We should proceed as fast as possible as we can with reducing emissions. And always the cost of climate change is more than the prevention and these, these.
Councillor, can I get you to wind up please?
That's it.
Thank you, beautiful.
Look how I listened to you, Mia Foster.
That was superb. No, I just, I just saw a times up come through from our advisor, so there we go.
Helpful for you too.
Right, so your seconder is?
Councillor Paul.
Cool. Councillor Paul, do you wish to speak?
Yeah, so I guess, I guess I would just say from what I've heard from concerns that, that some people are happy to fund and prioritise climate change work and maybe not safety work. And I think it's really important that you don't disentangle feelings and realities of safety from climate change. Because the reality is if people do not feel safe to walk around, they will drive around. They will drive in their cars, they will want parking. So you can't separate the two things. And we have to remember that pedestrians are at the top of our transport hierarchy that we've adopted. Therefore, safety is absolutely integral to our climate change goals. The Build Back Better stuff I think is really important, especially for disabled communities, because that was a big part of doing that Build Back Better and getting that support was to make our streets more accessible. And I think making cuts to that says that we don't care about disabled people moving around freely and independently. I've actually had dark and dingy alleyways lit up through the LED programme. So in Marama Crescent here in Udo Valley, we were able to get an LED light in the alleyway. So that's enabled people on that street to be able to move from the bus stop to their homes safely because of that lighting. The last thing I'll say is that debt ceilings are an envelope that we can work within, they're not a target. We don't need to draw on all of that debt and we don't need to head towards it. But our climate change targets are a target and we set those just last week and they are very ambitious. Fifty-seven percent will not be easy and in fact, it will rely on us attacking and addressing all of those rats and mice that we're talking about. So, and I just want to echo that the minister himself, Minister Woods, was super supportive of all of our tactical urbanism work. And I think he will continue to be. And maybe we should actually talk to him about our concerns and he might actually be really receptive and we might be able to reverse the decisions by Waikatahi. So don't call it quits now, let's keep having conversations, keep being ambitious and keep our promises to the community, Kiora.
Thank you councillor Paul. I see lots of hands going up. I want one more, if there's one more in favour, then I'm going to ask for somebody against and then if there isn't, I will put the amendment. Councillor Calvert, that's an against, is it? Because you're next up anyway.
You can take the next person because you.
Yeah.
A may, Andy, a may?
Yes, the may is, I'm also conscious, we have several other papers. So councillor Calvert, this is not a big one.
No, it's not a big one, but I'm foreshadowing my amendment that will follow this because, and this is why I can't.
this is why I can't support this particular amendment by councillor Fitzsimons. And I absolutely appreciate the sentiment and what's driving it. But I want to make sure that we make good cohesive decisions. And we know we're looking at our capital expenditure budgets over the next month to six weeks about the deliverability of them. And I think if we can look at those and add these into the mix, then we can find a workable solution going forward that is actually deliverable. Because one of the things is, and I know councillor Fitzsimons talked about credibility and it's a credibility about us able to deliver as well. And I would suspect that potentially, you know, Waka Koutahi knows that councils or agencies at the moment are struggling in deliverability because of the supply and material constraints. And so that may have been why they thought they could cut some of this funding. So look, I'm not going to support this amendment because I believe the best way forward is to, of course, we've heard from Brad Singh, the transport engineer with, he would have liked more time to have a look at what options are going forward and how we'd go about it. So very simply, I won't support it, but I will talk about the same to my amendment. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Calvert, councillor Day, then Penet, then Conde. And then if that's three in favour or three against, then we'll have to go again, see if somebody on the opposite direction. Councillor Day.
Kialda, Kaito. I'd just like to begin by echoing the words of Ellen Blake this morning. We should be thinking of these as low cost, high value. I think it is really important that we acknowledge that actually these are the things the community often come to us and say we're really concerned about. And this is our ability to respond. And I'm highly aware of that at the moment because I have three schools in the Northern Ward who are currently in the process of trying to figure out how to make it safer for children to walk to school. And that's only the Northern Ward and that's only those ones at the moment that we've got active process going with. And it's really important that we continue to support our young people to be able to be active. That is actually where we get the best behaviour, the behaviour change from communities through our young people because they will be the people of the future moving around. And I guess from that perspective, it seems a shame that we're looking at taking the funding away from children. It feels like we're taking the lollipops away from the kids, rather than seeing like councillor Penet said, you know, what about the roads? You know, actually, that we do prioritise our car movement more. And we see that around schools in the morning. Actually, it's, they're just, there's cars everywhere. And actually, if people felt that their children could walk safely, they would do that because it actually makes everybody's lives easier. And once your children get older and they can walk to school independently, you just feel like you've been released. And it's quite an amazing, amazing process. But they have to be pretty old at the moment to know that they can navigate some of our community streets. I also just want to speak to the possible change to the Tower Johnsonville cycleway in that process. I think it's actually really important that we do keep that one in there. And as I referred to in my questions, a few years ago, we had people who were cycling home from work at the end of the day and couldn't get home. The road was closed for hours and people were in their commute process. And it was actually really hard because there was no other way you can go. You can't bike on the motorway. So that particular connection there is a real weakness for our network and it's actually a real resilience one as well. So I think for me, that one actually needs some urgent addressing. I know it's a challenging one, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't do it. And just with regards to the LED lights, I think it's really important that we do push ahead with that. As councillor Paul said, the safety is a really important aspect in the city. I know in Churton Park, a new suburb, as happens when you, when you plan and you build new areas, sometimes you don't quite get the coverage of light in quite right. And that is definitely an issue in Churton Park. And I know that people would be hugely disappointed to see that we weren't prioritising improving safety in an area which does have some quite significant dark spots. And I just want to respond to councillor Calvert's comment about the supply chains. And I think that we've got to be careful not to make assumptions as to why people have made decisions. We don't know that that's why Waka Koutahi have made that decision. And actually, we need to see why each project will be delivered. And in many cases, it won't be anything to do with supply. It'll be just that we need to get underway and do the planning. So I think completely support these amendments. Thank you councillor Fitzsimons and councillor Paul for bringing this forward. Very happy to support, Kialda.
Thank you. Good timing. Right, councillor Penet.
Thank you. And I'll speak to councillor Calvert's in anticipation because I'll probably disagree with it. Look, councillor Fitzsimons and Paul, thank you very much for bringing this amendment. Look, I am a bit disappointed by this paper. It clearly doesn't have a climate focus. And it's really important that the climate team are involved in these issues every, every time. And I will be fierce about this. We are in a climate emergency. We've just had a discussion about water. Transport is a critical area of failure over many decades in the space of very, very strong criticism. And yet we still see the transport agency prioritising highways over simple things, as councillor Day indicated and Ms Blake, but with high value. So we need to take a strong stance on this, particularly as councillor Fitzsimons says, we just went out and congratulated ourselves for building a cycle network. But we didn't say, oh, but we're going to cut some money for bikes to schools, which is not okay. We absolutely have to get the kids into the right kind of modes as early as possible. So I hope that councillor Fitzsimons' amendment will go through. We need to be strict with ourselves and keep pushing ourselves to meet those climate goals.
Councillor Conde.
Thank you. I'm speaking partially in support, so make of that what you will, Mayor Foster, for your speaking order. Thank you councillor Fitzsimons for bringing this amendment. And thank you for kind of reorganising it so that it's in part so that I can vote for some of it and not all of it. That makes the process a lot smoother. I, I also think it's really concerning that when NZTA looked at their budgets and said, we have to cut back, that what happened to be on the chopping block was a lot of climate positive projects. That just seems a bit suspicious. And I think, you know, I agree, councillor Paul, that in fact it might be worth us going to have a conversation with the minister because I think that, you know, that this is a concern to me. That said, I think it does make sense for us to respond to the fact that we're getting less funding on some of these things. So I will be supporting funding for, to keep funding for the schools and the walking improvements, the cycleways, build that better and the LEDs. But I will be voting to defer the resilience, which is those retaining walls and the laneways. So some of the laneway projects are going to be funded outside of NZTA. So Swan Lane and Garrett Lane will go ahead regardless, but other laneway projects will be laid until year four of our LTP. I do think the Build Back Better programme is really important. It's innovative. And I hope that in fact, if we deliver it over the next three years, NZTA will see that there's some really good value for money to be had and other councils will start to copy us. I actually think the value for money there is so good potentially that it's actually worth doing it even without the NZTA funding. So I think I'll be supporting, like I say, I'll be supporting most of this. I think, you know, when this report comes from officers about our constraints about delivery, I absolutely want to hear what those constraints are. But I also want to hear commitment to delivering as much of our capital programme as possible. I want to hear ambition. I want to hear what your innovative ideas are to figure out how we're going to deliver all of this. For me, it seems a bit premature still to be talking about rephasing things. So I think that, and finally, I just want to say that this, the lifeline's route work is really, really important. And if we're going to find that NZTA aren't going to support some of that work, then we're going to have to think more broadly about how we fund that. And maybe again, that might be one we need to talk to the minister about how we go forward with that funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I will take that as in favour of, because you said it broadly in favour of. So councillor Thun or councillor Rush, either of you going to speak against the amendment? No? Councillor Fitz, yes?
Yes, I am.
Okay, right. Okay, well, then you're on. If you've been in favour of it, then I'd have gone to councillor Fitzsimons, write a reply.
So I thought I had Laurie ahead of me to.
No, because she's, she's indicated she's speaking in favour.
So I guess I'm not over the amendment as much as some of you. But what I do know is that, that the officers know best. And also, I'm reading currently William Nordhouse's book, Climate Casino. He's a Nobel Prize winner for economics and climate. And, you know, what we need to be doing with these is evaluate what are the best things, the best bank they've got. And Alison's absolutely right. We did things as fast as possible. We need to know what is really possible. So I'm comfortable with the recommendation that the officers have put forward and probably which with the amendment that I understand has been foreshadowed by councillor Calvert.
Thanks councillor Rush. In that case councillor Thun, you're back on.
Kialda, everyone, and thank you for all the great, yeah, core door so far. And I think I just want to come back to the city vision on this one. We're about being inclusive, sustainable and connected. And, you know, this, to me, is really not, not bringing all of that together. And it's not been brought together yet. And so for me, the vision of the inclusivity of our children is critical and that should be the priority of everything this council does. So to see that on the list to be axed is just, it's never, I don't think that's going to fly. I also want to talk about just supporting our businesses with the spaces. And I appreciate that the laneways is potentially one of those. But actually, our city really needs our support with creating great spaces. So I'm in favour of, you know, just keeping that, keeping that in there. Just the building back better is just a no brainer. That's about efficiency plus. It would be ridiculous to go back on that at this point. It's one of the best ideas that the councillors had and is actioning. That is innovation. Please don't cut the innovation. That's what we're here for. And the only one I do have a question mark on is the resilience and the retaining walls because this had to be a bit about timing. But also just back to what Waka Koutahi, it would be good, it'd be great to have a look in to see their processes, to see which other councils' climate child safety budgets were axed. I think that's a really fair question to ask. So if any of our media are out there, I'd love you to have a little look at that. Thank you. And that's all for me.
Thank you. That is everybody. I'm going to tuck in my two cents worth if I can. Look, this is a relatively small amount of money. I know there are things which people want to spend and get on with. But I don't think we should overplay it, councillor Fitzsimons, this sort of, if we didn't do this, this is sort of abrogation and walking away from all the things that we did. I mean, our budget is always predicated on a whole bunch of different things. And unfortunately, the way in which these things work, well, unfortunately, it just has to be that way, is that we do our LTPs essentially at the same time that NZTA does the NLTP. Oh, that's a lot of acronyms. Anyway, but, you know, so they all come out roughly the same time. So inevitably, councils will put up their bids for transport funding and the Waka Koutahi will then say, you know, here's, here's our response to that at the same time as we do our NLTPs, our LTPs. So it's inevitable. Essentially, in fact, you could probably put a ring around it that every time there will be something that doesn't get funded to the extent that we want to. And I guess then the decision we've got to make is what we do with that. And the question is whether we want to go, well, we're going to go and do it now and we pay the lot, or whether we're actually going to say, well, look, we could be willing to wait for a period of time until the next NLTP, or perhaps that they pick these things up as they go through. What's going on with their budget? Well, I think it's probably two things which I'd say. It's government. So that's where the discussion with the minister is probably worth having. It is government that sets the overall government policy statement pot. So it decides how much money is going into state highways and what's going in public transport, what's going into active modes and so on. And then it's the board of the agency which then decides what goes, you know, what gets funded from within those, those ranges that they get given. So I haven't gone into how they've done that. But I would imagine that they have got significant number of projects which are locked in, which they cannot move because they're already happening. And that, some of that will be big state highway projects. Some of it will be things like the, I suspect the CRL in Auckland will be a big one. Those kind of things will be the ones that lock them in. And, and just the, the other point that I'd make is we are going to, you know, we know we're not going to deliver everything that we've got within our budget. That's the reality. If you wanted an innovative suggestion, I'd probably say the first innovation you go is crying out loud, you're going to need to get some more people into actually do the work. Because at the moment, we know that many of the sectors of our community are saying they're short of, short of labour. And the construction industry is definitely one of those that is short of labour and it's crying out for that extra labour. Councillor Fitzsimons, write a reply.
Yeah, look, just very briefly, I don't accept that we are not going to be able to deliver. We'll certainly not be able to deliver if we don't plan to deliver. And I just want to bring some reality about what we're talking about in terms of resilience work. We're talking about earthquake prone retaining walls on lifeline routes. That's the reality of what we're deciding on. So $14 million isn't small fry to me. It's important. But I also think there's a symbolic credibility in this council doing what it sees and continuing to do it because we valued it as important. So thank you.
Cool. Thank you. Nice and, nice and to the point. Right, councillors. Now councillor Conde, you want it taken in two parts. So let's have a look at the that.
Yes, so I want to vote against A, resilience work and C, laneway upgrades.
Because anybody else who wants anything else taken separately? I don't detect that. Okay, so what we'll do is A and C first, and then we'll do the rest. Okay, so.
All right. So can I just say, what about one? What are you doing? Or is this just the amendment?
Amendment.
Okay, cool.
So the vote on two, A, resilience works is equal. So seven in favour, seven against. Deputy Mayor Free being absent. Mayor Foster, you have the casting vote.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll go with the officer's recommendation when it comes out.
So that has failed.
Yep. And C? What, that's the vote on A and C, isn't it? Because they went together.
I had interpreted it to be just A.
Councillor Conde asked for A and C. And I'm assuming that's what everybody was voting for because that's what I asked. Okay.
Councillor Thun is shaking her head.
Councillor Thun shaking her head. Should have done that earlier. Okay, well.
We'll take that as the vote just on A alone.
So A alone, councillor Thun. Okay, right. We'll do C separately. Okay. Okay, let's vote on C and then we'll take the rest.
Again, that is equal. So seven in favour, seven against. Mayor Foster, you have the casting vote.
Somebody's obviously changed their mind as well as councillor Thun. So, okay, well, we will go with officer's recommendation with that one as well. So that comes out too. Okay.
And I'll just read aloud who voted against, if that's okay. So against is Mayor Foster, councillor Calvert, councillor Conde, councillor Sparrow, councillor Young, councillor Rush and councillor Wolf.
Thank you. Okay, and then we'll take the rest.
So that has carried nine votes in favour, five against. Those against were Mayor Foster, councillors Calvert, Young, Rush and Wolf.
Thank you. Cool. Now councillor Calvert, is it worth moving your amendment, given what's been done with that one?
Well, didn't she foreshadow it? And isn't it a direct negative? Like she foreshadowed it.
Yeah, I need to see what it is because I can't see it in front of me.
Generally, you don't because it's failed. It just disappears.
Well, that's what I would have thought. So I can't see the amendments. I've got everybody's. Screen. Can you share the amendment? I'd like to get officers' advice on whether that is, because we've clearly got some paper, a paper which is coming later. And we did make a couple of changes to the overall programme, at least in respect to the resilience work and the laneway upgrades. So officers' advice on whether that is legitimate still or not.
It's a direct negative. Saying to delay it. We've just agreed to do it.
No, we've agreed to do some, but not all of it. That's why I'm asking the question. If we'd agreed the lot, then I'd probably have said no, it's gone. That's why I'm asking the question.
Who's answering this?
I think, I think however I'm looking at you as chief executive, you can delegate to anyone you like to answer if you like.
We're just absorbing it. Mayor, I mean, obviously, we do support the notion that we make an align our decision making to the, and overall. we, we make an align our decision making to the, and overall review of the capital capex programme. But you've just agreed to do all but two of those items. So I, I don't think that we need to actually make that decision because you've made it.
Made enough of that decision to make it a not worthwhile exercise. Councillor Calvert, I'm going to suggest that maybe you just let that one go, given the overall vote.
I'll, I'll let you make the ruling, Mayor.
But I, on that basis, I shall take the advice that we've had and say, well, I will without. Cool, thank you. We're back to substantive then, as amended, is any further?
Does that, does that get recorded in the minutes?
Heidi?
Uh, it's an amendment not accepted. So I can double check, but I don't believe it does.
Okay, you could just check, because I would like that recorded.
We'll check that one, okay? Okay, uh, any other debates? I see none. Uh, I'm not going to exercise a right of reply. Uh, so we'll go straight to the vote as amended.
Can I just have my um, right of reply? Or what? I reserved my right to speak, didn't I?
You reserved your right to speak.
Yeah, so I was going a bit too quick, I can't access the buttons. So I'll be very, very quick.
Sure, no, go for it.
You know, look, guys, um, as you know, I supported the enhanced construct and and funding for the enhanced cycle ways. But I did say at the time that, you know, I was concerned about the um NZTA funding. Um, and I think that, you know, that's come home to roost. And I think, you know, it seems a bit odd that we, um, on the one hand, underpinned our cycleway budget by um NZTA funding. And then um, when it doesn't come through, we just add more debt to it. And sort of makes you wonder, uh, why did we bother? But um, anyway, you know, and I also said when we approved um first to zero policy that, you know, I proved that, but there's no blank checks. And I just think that we're starting to write those blank checks because uh, we don't have the money that's, that we expected to come. Uh, but we're, we're spending it anyway, but, so I, I would be supportive.
Thank you. It's very clear, right? Councillors, we're going to vote uh.
Are you taking one and two?
On the amendment, well, we've got, receiving the information, and then we've got essentially the amendment as passed.
Can you take those separately, please?
Yes, we'll do that, okay? So first of all, first of all, receiving information. Let's vote, please.
That is unanimous.
Thank you. Okay, and then the, the revised two?
Just waiting on votes from councillor Panna and councillor Young. That has carried eight votes in favour, six against, with councillors Calvert, Sparrow, Young, Rush and Wolf against, as well as Mayor Foster.
Thank you. Okay, that takes us on to the next paper. Um, the councillors, I'm going to suggest actually that what we do is we deal with the COVID paper, and then we've got Tanaka backed into um, the MFC building, because those two obviously relate to each other. It makes sense to have those two together. People comfortable with that? Okay, we'll do the, so we'll do the uh, the COVID paper uh, next. Um, Barbara, that's it. Marty Reed is, is down to say any words in introduction and to answer any questions. Is Marty on? On the call?
Marty, you on the line? No.
No, okay, well, Sarah, do you want to do that then?
Yeah, so um, following on from last month's paper to Finance and Performance Committee, um, this paper now makes recommendations to councillors regarding um, what actions we can take to provide relief if required. Um, and so I will take the papers as read and happy to answer any questions.
Very nicely introduction. But any questions? I have councillor Panna.
Um, thanks, Sarah, just two questions. Um, so the government didn't offer any rent um subsidies. They're never able to sort that issue out. I don't think they could sort it out last year, last year either.
All right, councillor Panna, what was the?
Oh, that was just about, just about the rent subsidy. So we're having to come in because the government didn't do that. Is that, just double checking? Yeah, okay. That's, yeah, cool. Um, and I guess, look, I guess I'd want a bit more transparency around this. So just to be clear, are we going to, once any decisions have been made, will we say who we've given the money to? Just like the government has?
Yes, we can report on that. There's um, there might be some sensitivities about the amount of rent if it's commercially sensitive, but who, who we've provided relief to, um, and we'll see if there's any sensitivities, but it should be fine, councillor Panna.
Well, even if it could be put in bands, because the, I mean, like, the wage subsidy is, is published, yeah. Okay, thank you.
But I think um, uh, Sarah, it would be correct to say that we're not actually giving money so much as not taking it.
Correct.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Fitzsimons?
Just on that, can I, so can I just clarify? Because I asked for a list of um, people that would be, could be potentially affected. And I was told I couldn't get it because it was commercially sensitive. But we are going to get it if they do benefit from the relief, is that right?
We can provide that, just maybe not all the details of the amount, depending on how specific we are.
So we will find out who, who got it if they did. Well, even if we might not find out the details of how much.
Yeah. I can't, sorry, councillor Fitzsimons, I can't imagine too much of that will be commercially sensitive.
Yeah, cool, I was a bit surprised not to get a list, but anyway.
Thank you. Now, the questions? Thanks, Sarah. Right, um, councillors, uh, who would like to, to move this paper? Calling for volunteers. Before I have to do it. Is that a hand going out, councillor Fitzsimons?
Yeah, I'm happy to. I move the paper, I think it's responsible approach.
Thank you. Um, I'm happy to second that. Um, look, what I was just going to say is that this is a, an example where we are actually seeing the, the real effects of COVID, um, clearly affecting businesses uh, in particular. Um, and some of our own businesses too, with the CCOs, but, uh, and, and us having to step up again to help out. We, we did that the first time round. Um, and in fact, quite comprehensively stepped up. I think we were the first council in the country to put together a comprehensive pandemic response plan. Um, the challenge that we've got there is that um, this uh, uh, that this money is not free. Um, and at some stage in the future, it has to be paid back. It's just a matter of really of, of when it gets paid back, uh, and at what period of time. Um, I did actually, um, miss, actually asking one question, Sarah, and I should have done that. Um, but I'll, I'll come back to you later on, because I did struggle with um, with clause 11, which was a house 7.33 million. When you spread it over fifteen years, it ends up being 2.1 million per annum. Uh, that looked like an incredible interest rate to have to get, to get to that point. Um, but you could possibly, you might be able to text me on that one. Thank you. Anybody else who wants us to speak? No? Councillor Fitzsimons, do you want to write a reply? No, okay. Can we then go to the, uh, the resolutions and put them all? Um, and um, I'm, I'm going to take 11 separately, because I cannot, cannot work out the maths for the life of me. There must be something wrong with those numbers. Okay, so, right, so we'll take um, all of them except 11.
Sorry, can we have them up on the screen, please? And Andy, if we don't understand 11, how can we vote on it?
Well, that's up to you. I, I.
Can we get an explanation?
I will get, I will get an explanation then, just before we vote on that one. Do all the rest first.
Kia ora, Mayor, uh, Sarah has, is just momentarily out of the room. And we'll just, we'll just, she's back. So a question on item 11, an explanation of its meaning.
The question is, the question simply is, Sarah, out of 7.33 million over fifteen years, equates to 2.1 million per annum?
Yeah, Marty's actually on the line now, so perhaps he can answer that question for me?
Good. Does that make sense, Marty?
We'll come back to, if he's not here, and um, clarify if that's the right either term or value.
Yeah, I think there might be some numbers you need to correct. So councillor, I'm, I'm perfectly comfortable saying that obviously we've got to pay for whatever the, the 7.33 over a period of time, but over fifteen years, I cannot see how that could possibly be 2.1 million per annum. Not at our rate of borrowing. So we'll get the numbers corrected. And on that basis, I'm happy to vote for it. Are you all happy with that?
Uh, no, I'm not happy with it, because when we're voting on something, we don't know what the figures are. It's crazy.
Mayor, we're just um, trying to get hold of Marty, who is the key author of the report, sorry.
Why don't we defer this aspect to come back?
Well, so yeah, what we'll do is, let's get rid of one to ten, and then we'll come back with 11, um, when we've got the numbers checked and explained. Okay, so we're voting on one to ten. Councillor Sparrow?
Just waiting on councillor Young and councillor Rush. And that's fourteen in favour, that's carried.
Okay, so, and then we'll come back to 11 when we get the advice, uh, at the appropriate time. Okay? Um, and, and feel free to tell us at the end of, probably the end of each, one of the other meet, uh, the, one of the other um, items. Right, that takes us to uh, the Civic, Tanaka Civic precinct paper. Uh, do I see Danny come there? I do. Danny?
Yeah.
Thank you for all the work, welcome back.
That's all right. Good to be here.
Yep, and um, look, if there's anything you want to say, I mean, obviously the paper's there. Um, take that as read, but if there's anything you want to say, uh, then go for it.
Yep, Kia ora, councillors, um, and I'll be really quick, because I, I guess Andy said the paper probably is read. Uh, it, the paper is a response to the um, previous paper on the eighth of April, which um, you, you approved the framework and principles subject to public consultations. So, so the flavour of the paper really is reporting back on, on the outcome of that public consultation process. Um, the, the, I, I think the, again, it's covered in the paper, but the, the feedback was um, pretty strong. And the amount of any opposition to any of the, the vision or the objectives was, was quite low. Um, I, I probably just should explain that there's a, a gap between the support level and the low level of opposition, which really came through from a, a block of neutral voters um, who, who indicated across pretty much everything they were neutral. Uh, the point they were then trying to use by, by indicating neutral support was, was um, around the issues of Jack Illett Green, the retention of the City DC Bridge, the Harris Street. So, so they used the opportunity to, to really focus on those aspects of um, uh, the precinct. Um, but the, the framework itself doesn't actually try to determine the future of those uh, aspects of the precinct. It really is about guiding the principles that any decisions down the line would be applied against that. Um, so, so that was pretty much all I had to say. Um, the questions that came through from councillors were really around, have we reflected the, the items that came through the discussion on the eighth of April? Uh, and they are uh, faithfully represented in the, in the final framework. So happy to pick up any questions at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Danny. Um, councillors, are there any questions of Danny? I'm going to start with one, and that's Danny, can I just ask also that we will take the opportunity to go back to all the submitters um, with uh, feedback on what was done with this mission? Just to close that circle.
Can do, yeah.
Good, that'd be very, well, that'd be very good, because it's a bit we don't, don't always do as, as well as we could. So, um, councillor Panna?
Um, thanks, Danny. Um, you may be aware that we got an amendment through in the Frank Kitz Park paper about finding competitive pre-green space. So in theory, is it possible if the cab building is demolished, that that would be where we could compensate?
Um. And, and in theory, I, I think it's, um, it's, um, yeah, there's nothing that the framework would actually talk about. So, so the principles around green space were strengthened from the um, eighth of April meeting to talk about the, the aim to have more green space represented in the precinct. So, so again, i- it doesn't fall down and say that, um, that, that's a specific area that's excluded from it or included from it. I, I think you would then come down to what's that balance of, of the built environment versus the open space versus green space? So there's nothing in the framework that precludes that, that conversation.
Could it be more positive on that point?
Um, I, I, I don't think, given that's, that's quite a fundamental change to both the framework and the, the um, LTP conversation around the future of modern cab. I suspect it's probably not for a discussion for the framework. Um, it's probably a bigger issue than that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, councillor Young? You're muted. You're mute.
Um, as I have very fond memories of the park where Cab now stands, it was very sunny and sheltered. Um, if you were a betting man, what would you say the odds are of that being returned to a park?
And I'm not a betting man, so I won't speculate on that. Um, I, I, I think we have indicated that, that the, the modern cab, that as buildings, they take up quite a big footprint of, of the square. And if you were looking at a demolition of those two buildings, then I, I think you would rethink how the footprint fits within the square, and therefore how the Mercer Street entrance to the square responds, and the ability to take that opportunity of, of a changed footprint to increase the greening and open space of the square. So, so um, again, without responding with any odds, um, I, I think that certainly there, there's an opportunity to rethink how a building might work in that space, if, if that's the option.
So, thank you. So then, following on from that, what are the chances of us releasing those poor dolphins who are trapped in that tiny little um, fountain behind the art gallery when they used to have a great big pond in the park in front of, uh, where Cab is now?
And again, I'm, I'm not giving you any odds on that either. So, so I think um, one, one of the things that, that the next steps that we have to do is, is the conservation plan, which really looks at, at what, what are the aspects of Civic Square that, that have historical heritage value? Um, so what, what is actually entailed in the square that, that um, gives life to the heritage precinct? And then how we respond to those, how they, what needs to be preserved? What needs to be um, taken into account? So I think the heritage plan is, is the next step in there, with that type of aspect, will be picked up.
Thank you, I just want you to have this dolphin firmly in mind. Thank you, Danny.
Thank you.
Nice to see the big picture, the councillor. Uh, I don't see any other, um, any other questions. So, thank you, Danny, for that. Um, I know you're going to hang, hang into the, the conversation there. Um, councillors, I'm looking for somebody who wishes to move this. I'm probably looking at you, councillor Panna, if you want to, or certainly I will. Oh, councillor Young?
Oh, Mayor Foster, I don't think I will, I've got some scepticism, so councillor Young might want to.
Councillor Young, do you wish to move the framework?
I'm, I'm very happy to move it, you know, I'm, Civic Square is the heart of us.
Where are you going?
Here. And so I'm, I'm very happy, I think Danny's done great work, Danny and his team. And I'm not going to say much more, because this meeting, it's already ten past three. Um, but you've read the papers, and um, over to you, but Danny, thank you.
Thanks, Danny. Um, thanks, councillor Young. Uh, look, I'm, I'm just going to say a couple of things just briefly, and that's one is to say thank you, Danny, for all the work that you've, you've done. Councillors, also thank you for pushing, because I think we all did, we said we want to get on with this. Um, and you can see the shoots of new life going on around uh, Tanaka Civic Square with the work being done in um, uh, the, the town hall, uh, and we're advancing now with the library. Uh, obviously, there are going to be some, uh, some issues to, to deal with, with um, MOB and cab and the um, uh, and, and the Capitole, uh, Jack Illett area. In respect of, um, in respect of green spaces, the, the document's quite clear that says that we want to have at least as much green space as we've got at the moment, if not more. What it doesn't do is tell you where that's going to be or how it's going to be aligned. And I think, um, we will be very rash if we were to sort of try and design the future of the, of the precinct on the hoof. And I think that's probably what Danny was wisely counselling us, uh, to go know when they're doing. Um, just the last thing to say is, I think, um, I want to, to praise the Civic Trust for their, uh, the forum that they ran, um, which I thought was a very valuable, a very valuable forum. Um, and also to say that it was really nice to be able to see the really clear way in which the um, the public input has been reflected in the, um, in the, in the paper and the changes which have been made. So don't anyone ever tell you, or don't you, don't ever agree with anyone who says councillor never listens to anything, because there is very, very clear evidence in this paper. Again, the council says, hey, we've heard what you said, and we've changed this, this and this. And I think all we need to do, Danny, which is why I raised that as a question, is to make sure that we go back to the community who submitted and say, hey, we heard this, we didn't agree with you on that, but we agreed with you on that, or whatever it might be. Just, I'm sure we can do that, and that, that's the bit we often don't, don't complete that circle. So I'm, I'm delighted that we've got to this stage and look forward to future development of the heart of our city. Councillor Foon and councillor Panna?
Um, Kia ora, I, I'd like to keep it brief.
Kiora, I'd like to keep it brief. I just am really thankful that we've got a sense of, a set of principles to guide us with the space, with our hearts, Tanaka, going forward. And I'm sure we can feel the life coming back into that space. But I really wanted to thank the submitters who came in, and I could see that we were all nearly dying after a very long council meeting that day or a committee meeting. But what I did pick up from Inner City Wellington was how the value of that open space is so critical to them, and particularly the Paraty Beach at Bridge. So thank you, Danny, for asking us to bring my questions. I'm really keen to see how that comes through in the conservation plan as my iconic Wellington place. And yeah, same, just looking forward to seeing the life coming back to our heart. That's all from me. Thank you.
Councillor Foon, councillor Pannett.
Thank you. Look, I'll just be brief. Look, Danny, thank you very much for your hard work on this. It's an important piece of work. Look, there's a lot of good stuff in here around the strengthening around the green space and making sure that we do have a heart for our city around bringing more life in there. I think that will be helpful. But I will be watching like a hawk over the amount of green space that is in there. We've heard very clearly from people living in the inner city that they do need some outdoor space. So we need to make sure that that happens. And obviously, there are a few concerns. And I think when it comes to it, actually, like around the entrance way, the future of Jack Illett Green, there will be some vigorous public discussions. So, and I just want to signal that I, in voting for this framework, I'm not in support of demolishing the MOB building. But I'm not going to raise an amendment around now. Thank you very much.
Thanks, councillor Pannett. Councillor Young, write a reply.
Sorry, sorry. No, I don't need to do a write a reply. I just think we need to crack on. Everyone's heard it.
Cool. Thank you. Right, okay, we will take the recommendations as one, unless anybody wants to do anything separate. I can see councillor Fitzsimons has already voted with enthusiasm.
So that has carried unanimously. Councillor Sparrow has let me know that he has left the meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. Right, okay, that takes us to the Michael Phallus Centre Car Park, long-term lease. So who's going to introduce this, Phil?
Hello, councillor May.
Mayor Foster, if I might interject, we do need to resolve that the meeting extend beyond six hours by 3:30. This might be a really good time just before Phil gets into it.
Let's do it now, then. I was, I was looking at that going, yeah, I think we might squeeze something else in. Okay, that's fine. Okay, councillors, you know, the draw there, we are required to to agree that we take the meeting beyond the six-hour timeframe, which will be 3:30. I'm going to encourage you that we don't go too far beyond that. So I'm going to move second by councillor Conde with the quickest to the button.
Having so much fun, don't stop.
We're intending to stop at some point, and hopefully it won't be that far beyond 3:30, councillor.
Feels like it's been ages since we've done one of these sessions, actually.
And it has carried unanimously, thank you.
Not long enough, I'm afraid. Some of the other ones are quite long, too. Right, okay, Phil. Thanks, Heidi.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Mayor and councillors, I'm introducing this paper to you today. You've had two workshops on it and have just read it. So I'll be brief in my introduction. So the Michael Phallus Centre Car Park, it's a strategic location, sits in the nexus of a really important part of the city. As a corner of the Tanaka, as we just heard earlier, so connection through to Cuba, proximity and connected to the waterfront and a major transport corridor. So in 2015, 2025 long-term plan, the council agreed to the disposal of the Michael Phallus Centre Car Park for development by way of a long-term prepaid ground lease. And that was always going to be subject to future council approval, the terms of which are before you today. In 2016, a two-stage process was undertaken, from which Willis Bond was the preferred development partner. And that was on the basis of the design brief that they put forward and also the financial outcomes that were associated with the proposal. The council officers entered into negotiations with Willis Bond, from which non-legally binding terms of the development agreement and lease were developed. And as you know, the 2016 Cora is quite, put a pause on negotiations while we reassessed our assets, particularly in the Civic Square areas, we knew it then. The St James Theatre strengthening came along at about the same time, and the Royal New Zealand Ballet building was temporarily relocated to the, to the site. Now that we've got the completion of the St James Theatre approaching, through the 2021, 31 LTP, there was a direction to officers to continue the disposal process of the car park that was originally started and agreed in the 1525 LTP. We're now at a point where we have non-legally binding heads of terms between Willis Bond and the council that proposes we enter into a 175-year prepaid ground lease. And that'll be in exchange for a cash payment, and it includes a provision of, quite importantly, we think the provision of public access ways through the site that connects the waterfront and Cuba Street. Now, the proposal comprises essentially a development that has 15,000 square metres. It's an eight-level building, base-isolated, and it has a sustainable design to a minimum five Green Star rating or its equivalent. There will be landscaped public areas and thoroughfares through the site that create these important pedestrian connections between the waterfront and Lower Cuba. There is a matter of the Royal New Zealand Ballet building. That has not been made yet a final decision on that. But the important point to note is that the resource consent requires that building to be removed by the earlier of March 23 or six months after the Royal New Zealand Ballet leave the building. We're working with Willis Bond on a, on a potential future and also the team are working with the New Zealand Ballet. That's essentially my introduction, and over to any questions now.
Are there any questions, bearing in mind, councillors, you've had, well, you haven't had the paper before, but you've had the guts for it before, a couple of briefing sessions? Any questions? I see none. Hi, councillor Foon.
Um, Kiora, Phil. Um, just around the, how long is the building estimated? What is the lifespan of the building estimated to be?
I don't have a particular number, councillor, but certainly the, the proposal of 175-year ground lease reflects the longevity of the building and the investment required in that building to maintain that sort of level of longevity, including the, you know, the base isolation, the Green Star nature of it.
And is there a standard built, building lifespan that people kind of tend to work around depending on what they invest?
It really depends on the, on the nature of the building, the site and its use, to be fair.
Okay, thank you. That's useful.
Thank you. Right, I don't see any other questions. I'm going to take the opportunity to introduce the paper then. Our councillor Pannett, is that a question? Okay, you just got in there in time. Oh, I can't, oh, crikey.
I mean, I just want to stick in the paper. Thank you.
Okay, right, okay, right. Is that a question, councillor Matthews? No, okay, right, cool. Good, okay, right. Otherwise, I was regretting, regretting letting the first question go in. Okay, look, I think this is a really exciting proposal. It's, it's beautiful timing that we've got this happening. Essentially, we've just approved the, the framework for Tanaka Civic Square. And what we've just approved has said, if we approve this, then obviously we change it from a site which we're thinking about to a site which we've, we've got a plan for. And you clearly see set out in the paper that the history, starting in the 2015 to 2025 LTP, we consulted on this, we said, yep, we're going to go to the market, the community said, yep, that's fine. We went to the market and the process is set out in the paper. Willis Bond was selected as the preferred developer. And if I can say that, you know, I have more than once said that Willis Bond and LT McGinnis, who are a construction partner, if you like, for Willis, Willis Bond have made a massive contribution to the city and see buildings all over our city. And they are really great quality buildings. So I think that the whole team there can be very, very proud of what they have contributed to Wellington City. And of course, right now, we are engaged in several projects headlined by Tarkina, but also Site Nine is there, you know, they're involved in other projects, which we're peripherally involved in. For example, the Catholic Cathedral on Hill Street. So there are many, many projects which we have worked with them on. Most of the, most of the waterfront projects we've developed have been with Willis Bond, but not all. So I think we have a very, very good partner there to do the development. But I'm sure that we will get a quality outcome. I thought the question you asked, I wasn't quite sure where you were going with that, councillor Foon. But obviously, the longer the buildings last, the better that they're built. Unless, you know, the better that is in terms of the impact on the environment. Yeah, that's exactly right. What we don't want to be doing, this thing of saying that we've got building consensus, but they've got to be at least 50 years. I mean, that's a terrible length of time for a building to last. You know, if we want to be a sustainable nation, we've got to build buildings that last a good, long time and that are quality buildings. So I am sure that we will get this. We engaged again through the 2021 LTP, 2021 31 LTP that we just, which we just approved three months ago. And we said, look, we forced this project, we want to come back to that. Forced it because of the earthquakes and having to have a look at Tanaka Civic Square as a whole. And then, so to the building itself, I think it looks fantastic. I think they've done a great job with the design of it. The pedestrian connections look really, really strong, you know, tying Tanaka Civic Square, the waterfront and Lower Cuba Street together. I think that's really compelling. I think it'll bring a huge amount of activity to this part of the city and add life to Tanaka Civic Square. The fact it's base-isolated, I think, is really strong as well in terms of resilience. And five Green Star, I think that should please councillor Pannett, I would have thought, no end. And the final point I want to make is that, and while this is not in the paper, we certainly talked about this publicly. It's been really great to see the potential here for the School of Music to go in there and the active conversations that are about the School of Music now. If you want to do something that's really going to bring arts, culture and activity into Tanaka Civic Square, you know, having the School of Music there will be fantastic. The original proposition for that was to go into the MOB. But you all know that the work that's been done on the MOB says that it's not economic to strengthen to the degree that needed to be done, and then, but they couldn't pay the rent or it would make that work. We were a long way off that. We put it up as a shovel-ready project. Sadly, we didn't get that, that support. That might have made a difference, but, but this gives the chance to have the National School of Music with Victoria University of Wellington, all those, you know, students learning the art of music and studying the art of music and the NZSO tied together. I think it's an absolutely fantastic proposition and the chance to add to the, the arts and culture and creative, creative mantle of the capital city, I think, is immense. So I'm delighted to move this, councillors, and I look forward to your support. Councillor Pannett, you're seconding.
Thank you very much, Mayor Foster. Slightly unusual for me to be supporting a project so close to the waterfront. But in this case, particularly given it's taking car parking space, I will be. But we've just got to be strongly signalling that the inner city is not for car parking generally. This needs to be for open space and for housing or commercial buildings. And look, obviously, yes, I am happy that it's at least a five Green Star. It's going to be base-isolated. That's, that's good practice. And we would like all buildings that have been built to be built to a high standard. I like the ambitions of the architect, that road needs calming, it's dreadful. And if there are people to be living there, it would be good if there wasn't so much car traffic. So I think Willis Bond, you know, really trying to raise the bar here. I would just say, though, that, Mayor Foster, your point about there being a lot of buildings developed by this company, I do think we need to encourage a bit of competition in the space and make sure that we have plenty of different ideas coming into the city to give the best outcomes. Nevertheless, it will give us some money, it will use the space and hopefully encourage other ways of getting into the city to come into the rejuvenated Civic Square. Kiora.
Councillor Matthews.
I just very briefly, I'm very comfortable supporting this proposal, but I do want to quickly bore people about housing. And that, and I did restrain myself last week from Sidestown, we put a tower block on top of the Palae Malai. So, but I'm happy to see that acknowledged in the paper that, you know, we do need to be looking at all of these opportunities for maximizing housing and that this developer didn't quite so much do that. I know these developers doing a lot of work around town. But I just want to note our consenting numbers are down again. People keep trying to reassure me on this, but I am not comfortable. We're now down, it's an average of 35% over the last 12 months. And, but also this last month Auckland is consenting at record numbers. So we, you know, this, this work started before we are in the extreme crisis that we're in now. But any new development, I think we need to be thinking about maximizing residential. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Matthews. Anyone else? No, look, thank you, councillors, just quickly in right of reply. Just a couple of things, councillor Pannett. I did when I was going back looking at the waterfront framework for the discussion that we had last week, have find that there was a, an explicit exclusion of areas beyond the keys from being considered in the waterfront framework. So while it's close to the waterfront, it is not waterfront. So just thought I would add that there. So, but thanks for your, your point that you made about that we need lots of other people building buildings. Absolutely, we do too. We need lots of good quality developers doing good quality development. And we've got some, you know, many others around town which are being built by plenty of other people as well. I just wanted to single them out, Willis Bond and LT McGinnis, because we have those particular partnerships with them. Of course, they're the preferred bidder who we have in front of us for this particular development. And of course, we have many partnerships with many other developers and construction firms as well. Who has been done with St James, the town hall, you know, by Mycroft and Nailers respectively, you know. So the work we're doing with McKee Phil and Sheop, so there's plenty of others who we are working with actively as well. And councillor Matthews, yes, we will not forget, we need to, we do need to elevate the number of houses built. It was interesting, actually, I did have a look back a little while ago at the number of houses built because it was a, there was a 1% lift in the, in the consents, I think it was, over the last year. The year before, it was about 19 or so. So it wasn't, it didn't give such a gloomy picture. However, we were still at the lower end of the major centres, you know, I think we were above the need broadly the same as Christchurch, I think, from memory, but behind Auckland and Hamilton and Tauranga in terms of the, the numbers of, the uplift and the rate per, you know, per population. So yeah, absolutely, we need to have more. Wellington's not an easy place to develop. Some of that's us, some of that's the topography and the seismic challenges that there are here and the cost of building. But it's something which, when you see what we're planning on doing with Let's Get Wellington Moving, you, I think you will heartworth for that. Okay, councillors, I'm going to take the whole as one unless anybody wants anything taken separately. I see not, and I'll see councillor Paul is already on the button.
Could we have a break soon, please?
I'm happy.
The heart is singing.
I'm happy to have a break.
That has carried unanimously, 13 votes in.
Councillors, it's probably sensible to just take a little break if you want. You're on at, what, 10 minutes?
Little, little one.
10?
Three.
We'll come back at 3:40. Okay, thank you all. See you shortly.
Is the live stream off?
Mayor, are you there?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, it's three, three forty. So we've got everybody back again.
I blurred my background so that councillor Matthews doesn't get distressed about the angle of the books that are about to crash on me.
I thought you were going to say that, so the councillor Matthews is not distracted by trying to read them all.
It's the pockets of doom.
We all care about you Nicola.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, right.
By the way, just in pass, we're not streaming now, are we? We are, yes.
Now we're all curious councillor Young.
What were you going to say?
No, I was just going to tell you about someone who's died, but I'll leave that.
Hold fire on that one. You might want to hold, you, you make the judgment call. Right, councillors, we will, we will restart because it's, it's three forty one now, it's at three forty. I can see that there are a few potentially still missing. Councillors Foon, Calvert and Wolf, possibly councillor Paul and.
What Simon wants to. Is that his knee or something?
That's, no, there he is. Right, cool. Right, okay, we'll get, we'll get back underway. So I'm going to take you back to item three, two point four. That's the COVID alert level three and four and recommendation eleven. Some of you weren't in the room when officers during the break just said, I've given us some updated numbers. So I'm feeling rather pleased by that. So the numbers which go in there are, instead of two point one million per annum, it's point five million per annum. And the uplift instead of point five percent is point one two percent. That's correct, officers?
Uh, that's correct, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, so with that, unless there's anybody who wants to say anything about that, I'm very happy to, to, we'll put that one in.
Uh, that is thirteen votes in favour. That has carried.
Beautiful, cool. Now, councillors, it was suggested, while some of you had taken off straight away for a well-oiled break, that maybe we could rattle through the next few without any great speeches or anything of that nature. So I'm hoping that that will be the case. Unless somebody says they want officers to introduce it, I'm not going to ask officers to do so. Okay. So, and I'll just go, I'm going to move them and just look for a second for each of them. If anybody wants to slow us down, please do. It's not to try to prevent you with anything, but on any given one of them. So the first one of those is the forward programme. I'm going to move that. councillor Foon, is that a question?
Um, I would like to look at the appointments, uh, paper.
Oh, no, 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 we, we get to that. No, I'm going to rattle through the ones which are in public at the moment, because all of those have come through somewhere else or they're relatively, relatively small things. Yeah, councillor Pannett.
I'd just like a date for when we're getting our full work programme, because we're still just getting a couple of months ahead. So that would be helpful.
Okay, cool. I, I'm sure officers will take that on board. I would, I'll take that up on chief executive. Cool. Okay, so forward programme, are there any questions? I see none. So it's seconded by councillor Fitzsimons. See, she's shaking her head vigorously on that one. Cool, we'll, we'll vote on that one.
That's waiting on councillor O'Neill.
She may not be there.
Cool.
Oh, she is?
Thirteen votes in favour. Thank you.
Okay, and then action tracking. Are there any questions on that one or issues that want to be raised? I don't see any. So this time I will move that nuts and ask councillor Day, if she will second it. Cool, thank you. I see nobody wanting to, to do anything other than vote, so we're on.
That's thirteen votes in favour. That has carried.
Councillor Sparrow is not here, is he? So.
He is not here. He should be back at four thirty.
Um, okay, we might be done by then. Somebody who attended that regs committee, Nigg's Avenue, like to, to move that. Councillor Wolf, thank you. Has anybody got any questions on that one? I see none. So councillor Wolf's moving. Somebody who was also at the committee liked to second. Is that a hand up there for seconding councillor Matthews? Cool, thank you. I wasn't sure you were keeping the sun out of your eyes or putting your hand up on that one. Okay, so it's moved and seconded. Any discussion? I see none other than enthusiasm to vote. So let's do that.
That's thirteen votes in favour. That has carried.
Thank you. And can I ask councillors Wolf and Matthews again to do the same for the road stopping in Amritsar Street? Happy to do that. Cool. Are there any questions? Anything, anyone want to raise? Again, I see nothing. Okay, so let's vote.
Thirteen votes in favour. That's carried.
Thank you. Councillor Calvert, is there anything you wanted to, to say in introducing the appointments performance committee, item on carry forwards?
Um, only that, probably coming back to council at the end of November will be further information about capital programme refacing. And in terms of what we may have as a carry forward going forward even past the end of the year. Yeah.
Okay, are there any questions? I see a, a hand up from councillor Foon.
Just to say I'll second.
Oh, it's a seconding hand. Okay, that's cool. Right, thank you. Any questions? I see none. So it's moved and seconded. Let's vote, please.
Thirteen votes in favour. That has carried.
Okay.
Can I just record my, I have to leave now the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Thanks councillor Calvert.
Thank you. Cheers.
Right, okay, I'm going to move that we go, move into public excluded. The reasons are set out there in the papers for two items. One's a land acquisition, potential land acquisition. The other one is appointments to CCOs. The reasons set out there, seven two I and J for the land acquisition, section forty eight one A. And section seven two A, it's section forty eight one A for the appointment. So I'm going to move that seconded by, I'm going to try again councillor Pannett.
Oh, go on.
Is that a yes? Oh, look, I, I have to try it. Okay, so it moves the seconded.
That is, that's twelve votes in favour. That has carried. If you give me one moment just to.
And I'd just say thank you to any members of the public who are watching us online. And we will now go into public excluded.